Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I am now calling to order the City Council of Chattanooga, Tennessee for Tuesday, November 18th. Please join me. We will have, would you mind doing the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, no.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Vice Chair, Councilwoman Hill.
Pledge of Allegiance, two flag of the United States of America, and two republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to do something?
I will.
The true.
Bow our heads, please. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day, life up in strength. Thank you for granting us travel and mercy with that accidental incident from point A to point B. We ask that you be with this council family and all of those that are represented here today. These words we ask in our name. Amen.
Do you have a special presentation to start our council meeting today? In October, Councilman Jeff Davis and I had the honor of visiting Wuxi, China, which is a sister city of Chattanooga. And so we're going, Councilman Davis is going to do a presentation, and we have some gifts from our sister city to give to representatives of the administration.
All right. Well, hello, everyone, or ni hao, as they say in our sister city of Wuxi. That's one of exactly two Chinese words or phrases that I knew in China. The other one is xie xie, which means thank you. And before we get too far into the presentation today, I want to give a big, a very big xie xie to Melissa in our council office for all of her outstanding work preparing the trip and making sure all the arrangements were in place for us. We certainly appreciate that very much. So, thank you. So, obviously Chairwoman Hill is here with me. She was on our delegation. And then Karen Claypool, who's the president of our local Sister Cities Association, is here with us as well. So, we'll get into kind of a little picture show here. The first half of our trip was spent in Wuxi, which is our actual sister city. Wuxi has a population of roughly 7 million, which is also about the population of Tennessee. So, if you can imagine putting the entire population of our great state into one city, that's Wuxi, and you kind of have an idea of the scope of the population and how it differs from what we're used to. So, up in the, kind of going from the top left there, the picture in the top left and in the middle, those were taken at a local automotive manufacturing plant, similar to Volkswagen like we have here. This plant, however, they make vehicles for any number of different automotive brands. So, on the day we were there, I believe they were making compact pickup trucks to send to South America. And the next day, they would be making something completely different. And their assembly line is very highly automated, and they switch very quickly from one product to the next. So, it was interesting to see that. Up in the top right corner is a picture of our delegation with some officials from the Wuxi University of Technology. And there on the far left of that picture is Kim, who is one of the members of the local Foreign Affairs Office in Wuxi, who helped guide us around. We're certainly very appreciative for her. Down in the bottom left corner there, again, that's our delegation. In that picture, we are with some local school officials from a local high school, which had, I believe, was it 2,600 students, I believe?
Something like that.
Yeah. And it was interesting. It was kind of partially boarding students and partially day students there at that school from around the Wuxi region. In the middle there, you have yours truly and also Chairwoman Hill. We're actually in a classroom. That's an English classroom. And at that point in time, we were just interacting with the students as they were having small group discussion about a book that they were reading through as they worked to learn English. And that was, that was a great experience there. In the bottom right, again, are, these are all official pictures. We've got some more casual pictures coming, I promise. But that is us with, in the middle, beside Chairwoman Hill is the Mayor of Wuxi. Beside him is a Vice Mayor. And then on the end is the head of the local Foreign Affairs Office. All right. So, this is what I'm more interested in. The food is kind of featured on this page. So, on the corners at the top there are kind of some samples of what we ate just about every meal in Wuxi, at least. It was very, the presentation was very ornate, elaborate. Up in the top left corner is, what you're looking at there is roasted duck, which, when I saw that, I was like, that looks like a jewelry box. So, it's like roasted duck presented in a sort of a jewelry box presentation. Again, very ornate. We would have multiple courses for each meal. Everything was served in the middle of the table, family style. And you rotate the lazy Susan around until you find what you want. And then I think next to the duck there is a steamer of dumplings, which was Chairwoman Hill's, one of her favorite things we ate while over there. And then in the opposite top corner there, it's kind of an imposing-looking creature. That's a local fish, head and all. Don't worry, we did not eat the head. But it's a sweet, it's in a sweet and sour sauce is what you're seeing there. So, and that was one of Karen's favorites. Any meal we had, the seafood was always a favorite for her. So, on the bottom left and in the middle there are pictures from the lake shore of Taihu Lake. So, Wuxi is on a, located on a lakeside. It's the third-largest lake in China, I believe, is what we learned. And so, we spent an afternoon in a park there on the lakeside, and that was very beautiful. We got some gorgeous pictures there. In the bottom right corner, at some point in the trip, we kind of just wanted to see, after all these official trips and kind of scripted sightseeing tours, we said, you know, we kind of just want to see how everyday Chinese folks live. And so, they took us to a grocery store. So, that's what you're seeing in the bottom right there is our, a picture from our trip to the grocery store, which is really pretty similar, at least I thought, to a lot of grocery stores you see here in terms of the layout. In terms of the products, maybe not so much. There's a lot of chickens' feed and live turtles and things like that. But at least in terms of the layout, you can certainly find what you, what you wanted pretty easily. And so, then for the second half of the trip, we took a high-speed train about an hour and a half south of Wuxi to Hangzhou. Hangzhou has a population of about 13 million, so even bigger still than Wuxi. And that's where we had the actual U.S.-China Sister Cities Conference, where we met local and state officials from across the U.S. and also officials from across China. And so, it was, you know, cities that have, other cities that have sister city relationships with other cities in China, all meeting together just to talk about cultural exchange, educational exchange, person-to-person diplomacy, as they call it, a lot. And so, some pictures from Hangzhou here. On the top row there, top left and middle picture, that's West Lake. So, Hangzhou, much like Wuxi, is located on a lakeside. West Lake, I think, though, is a good bit smaller than Taihu Lake. We actually, one afternoon, took a boat tour. So, it was nice to see the lake from that perspective. And then in the top right corner is a tea plantation that was located next to the National Tea Museum that we got to tour. On the bottom, bottom left there is an indoor market. So, as opposed to the grocery store that we saw in Wuxi, this is more of a fresh produce, fresh meats, and seafood-type market. And I thought you all might like the pictures of the veggies rather than some of the live animals and other creatures that we saw, although that was very interesting also. And then in the middle on the bottom there is an outdoor market. So, there's, it's actually a market street, several city blocks worth, as I remember, that are just different local shops and cafes. And it was, it was packed. That was really one of the main times I remember feeling just kind of the, exactly how many people are in these cities that we're dealing with, because it was, it was very close quarters in there as we made our way through that market. And then in the bottom right corner, that's our delegation with Ming Wei, who is another one of our Wuxi Foreign Office representatives, who served as a guide and a translator for us. And that is at a local Hangzhou university that has multiple campuses across the city. This campus in particular was used, at least currently, as the law school. So, I found that interesting on a, on a personal level. So, those are a few pictures from Hangzhou. And then the last picture is from the conference itself. So, the last day was the only day that we were actually in a building all day, having meetings and talks and lectures and things of that nature. And that's our delegation, again, with Ming Wei and with Kathy, another one of the Wuxi officials, who was so kind to show us around and to translate for us, which was, of course, very, very important. So, with that, we do have some gifts. So, when we were in Wuxi, we gave, presented to the Mayor of Wuxi a print of downtown Chattanooga for them to keep in their office. And then on their end, they sent us back with several gifts that we will present, I believe, to Mr. Roy on behalf of the administration. So, the first one is a teapot.
So, we should stand in the official Chinese way.
Oh, we should.
Come here, Karen, because the photos are very important. We want to get these for our sister cities friends. Okay, so you're going to hold it, and I'm going to hold it.
May I add to that?
Yes.
This is made from purple sand. It's a very special sand that they have in that area. And it's very prized, and these go for about 100 bucks. But you can leave tea in there three or four days, and it won't get sour. It won't turn bad. But they're very proud of their purple sand products.
They are. Just beautifully carved. Okay, so we're going to look at Brooke, and we're going to smile. We never did quite get the formal line.
No.
Amazing. Okay, so that's your present. We've got a beautiful box for it to go in.
Yes, so you don't break it.
Yes, thank you.
It's very beautiful. Okay.
Okay. It's an LED display of the, kind of the front building of the local high school.
We have a box shot. Careful, that's two pieces. Thank you, Chief. He didn't know that he was going to be there, why could I?
Thank you.
Crowd pleaser. Let's pay in the bears. So, this, this one is actually a special type of embroidery that's identical on the front and the back. So, perhaps there'll be a way in City Hall to display this for the people of Chattanooga so they can see both sides.
Absolutely.
And this is from the university.
The university, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have a box for it.
And that concludes the presentation. So, xie xie. Thank you.
I'll, I'll add one thing. Our translators were imperative to our ability to enjoy China. And the one time that I bought something without a translator with me, I thought I was buying little packets of green tea, which Councilman Davis loves their green tea. And I got home and realized it was something sort of like chopped asparagus in little pouches. So, I put that in the snack bin in the council, and I'm not quite sure if people got a little punked by that or not.
Councilman Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you all for this presentation. I have a question. Is this something that Sister Cities pays for, or who actually pays for this trip?
So, the government of China is committed to person-to-person diplomacy. Person-to-person diplomacy is the concept of Sister Cities. And Karen, which president founded Sister Cities? Which president founded Sister Cities?
Dwight Eisenhower in 1951. He said, "We don't make friends with government development. It's people-people relationships, and we need those to protect peace. We need that so that we can be in each other."
And so, Councilman Davis and I paid our way with our individual city council funds. And then the conference itself and the visit to Wuxi were sponsored by Wuxi, invited us in the same way that when we invited delegation, we provide them, you know, trips to area attractions and things like that. And then at the conference, that was all of the, all of the sister cities in the United States that are sister cities with China were invited. And so, there were, gosh, about, I think, 200 different cities represented. And it was really interesting to see there were multiple state representative, like people who serve in the House, the state representatives. So, representatives from Pennsylvania and New Jersey and Oregon. Actually, the president of the State Senate in Oregon was there. So, it was a very interesting experience. I highly recommend, when they host again, I believe they do it every year, every other year, that other council members go. It was a very interesting learning experience about our sister city.
Excuse me, Chairwoman. I'm battling these two ear infections. So, Karen, I didn't hear a word you just said. I can barely hear anything.
Well, here, I'll repeat it in the mic.
No, but you're fine. But what I think I heard, the point of the question, we paid a portion, the city paid a portion, then the Chinese government paid a portion.
No, so, yes, so each of us as city council people have a small $6,000 budget that we can use.
I'll use the council funds for.
Correct. We have a travel, yeah, we have a travel budget, correct. And so, Councilman Davis and I purchased our tickets that way.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry, I can't hear you say my life.
And we helped pay for Karen's ticket as well.
And Wuxi paid for the, well, Wuxi.
We're good.
Paid for hotels, meals, tourism, transportation, everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
May I add a little something here?
Well, Karen. Quickly, at the podium, we can give you, we can give you a couple of minutes. Sorry, we have to maintain the decorum of the meeting.
Sorry, I thought my teacher voice might work. If you have not noticed them, please, the next time you're in front of City Hall, notice that we have three large rocks and a plaque on the lawn on the right-hand side. Those were gifts from Wuxi. They are Taihu rocks, and they're very beloved. They come from the lake in Wuxi, and there are parks and different places where these rocks are displayed in Wuxi. They sent them to us at some point in time, and we rediscovered them. If you've not noticed them, please take a look next time you go to City Hall.
Thank you.
Xie xie.
Xie xie. Okay, thank you, everyone. Highly recommend, if you have the opportunity to participate in a Sister Cities trip, to do that. It was, it was wonderful. So, now, Council, let's take a look at our three-week agenda, please. Or actually, not our three-week agenda. Let's take a look at today's agenda, shall we? Let's start there. That'd be a good place. Okay, we don't have any ordinances on final reading. On first reading, please hit your light if you have any questions. We have some items from the city attorney. We have public works items, and we have some planning items. Councilman Elliott.
Yes. Phil, can you talk to me a little bit about the purpose of this junk amendment?
Yes, sir.
Definition amendment?
Yes, sir. We discovered in the process of looking at our Section 11216 that McKay's and the Secondhand Charles location, which is located in the city, might be in violation of our definition section. We decided that there was a new entity that was coming called Value Savers here in Chattanooga that was going to be offering secondhand goods that could be sold in that location, and that's why we've amended our code.
So, McKay's is selling secondhand goods, and there may be a violation?
All those CDs that you get from McKay's, they belong to somebody usually before.
And, but they don't fall under the, the definition doesn't match their business.
That was the concern, and that was why we wanted to revise the provisions to our code.
Let me ask you this. When I read this particular ordinance in the link, it also talked about junk cars and scrap metal and everything else. Does this particular ordinance pertain to tow truck yards? Well, I have a couple of those in my district, tow truck yards. I have this one scrap metal place in my district. Let me be honest, as we are looking to clean up our district, they're eyesores. And I get complaints about them all the time.
Yes, sir.
Would this particular ordinance govern those?
I believe it currently governs them as well, because I did not make any changes to that section here. It would apply to something that, like a Baxelin dealer here that does scrap metal.
Okay, here's something I want to do, Council, if y'all would bear with me. Since we're amending this particular ordinance, I would like to work with the city attorney's office to see if we can put some type of visual protections around some of these junkyards and scrap metal places, because currently, they're not outlined in this ordinance, unless I'm not seeing it. I would potentially like to add, this is an amendment later on, to say, if you have a fence, you need to have some type of visual protections around it. The fences need to be X-high. So, if it is okay, and sorry if I'm screaming, because I had you in here. I would like to push this off for a couple of weeks, if we could, to give us some time to work with your office, Phil, to make some additional amendments. Would that be?
Councilman, I wonder if you would be open to the possibility of moving forward with this incremental update to this, and then working with the city attorney and bringing a new ordinance to us with that additional language once you've had the opportunity to look at the code together to see if it's covered in zoning and land development.
Either is fine. I was thinking about trying to save the bureaucratic process as much as possible, but we can do that as well. Both need to be addressed.
All right. Just something to consider. You're certainly welcome to call for a delay if you would like.
And, and the only amendments that are included here are just the definition section. There's several other sections in the code we need to look at and deal with the aspects.
Okay, so I'll come back, I'll work with Phil, and we'll come back with a separate amendment.
Okay, and we can run that, yeah, we can run that through legislative.
Saying it.
And we'll run that through Legislative Committee.
Whichever committee you want to send it to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, do we have any questions on public works items under first reading? Okay, we have planning items under.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have one under public works.
Okay.
This is for, we're abandoning, excuse me, we are abandoning an alleyway in Bridgedale, the 200 block of East 19th Street. Can somebody from public works say anything about this?
What, what item is this?
And I know Chris, I know you reached out, and I have family stuff this weekend, so I hadn't had a chance to see it. But what, what are we looking to do with this particular abandonment?
So this is, the applicant filed this request because it's adjacent to their property, and currently that's, it is actually an old trolley line that used to run through that portion and that previously was operated by the city. And so it's, it, that's, that's the way that the, that it is, that it's proposed as, as that trolley line. So this, the city is the one that would need to abandon that. The applicant's intended request is to be able to, be able to combine that into their property for redevelopment.
Are there other properties that will be affected? Adjacent properties?
Not to my knowledge. I believe this one is on a corner.
Okay, can we?
Because this is, this is only the section immediately adjacent to the applicant's property. So if this trolley line, as we understand it, if it continues beyond that, this, this action has no impact on that.
Bill, can you and Chris and I connect before our agenda session, so I can get a little bit better idea as to where this is going? Before I approve this, Madam Chair, I may postpone this for a couple of weeks, but if we're able to get a understanding before the agenda session, we can go through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we have planning items under first reading. Hit your light if you have any questions or comments. Hit your light again, please. Vice?
Hit it again.
Councilman Elliott, sorry.
Sorry, it's Karen here. Or somebody from RPA. Karen, I know you guys presented on this last week, the Southern Spear Project in Highland Park.
Yes.
Have we heard back from the developer on this?
I emailed the developer and encouraged them to watch the video of Planning and Zoning Committee and said that they were into, that you had comments at Planning and Zoning Committee, and I don't believe I heard back. I'd heard back on some of the other cases from this agenda, but I don't believe I heard back from that one.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm gonna give this developer the courtesy I don't give a lot of people, but I'm gonna postpone this to December 16th, and after which, had this developer not reached out to myself or the Neighborhood Association, it will be denied until the 16th.
Okay. Vice Chairwoman, no.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to defer item E and F as well under planning for the same reason, lack of a conversation. I did speak with a courtesy individual, but I have not spoken with anyone from the Wilcox Boulevard. So is, is anyone here from there? Which one? Wilcox?
I'd like to speak about Wilcox, but I don't think I'm that far from it.
Okay, who's, who's here with Wilcox? Okay, so I will see you, but I am going to defer.
Okay, we will have a public comment period during the voting portion of the meeting, where you will have an opportunity to speak. Thank you. Okay. Counsel, I wouldn't make, like to make a note on item I, that the staff have worked together to clarify the language on the floodway section. You will see that reflected in the link in the agenda. All right, moving.
I helped on here.
And Phil helped. Thank you, Phil.
Yes, ma'am. Ball face where I helped.
There we go.
Okay.
Resolutions, counsel, we have, we have several resolutions. I will likely take some of these as a package. We would like to discuss, we're gonna discuss items A and B in the economic development meeting. Or Councilman Elliott, do you prefer to discuss them now?
I don't know.
Okay, they're on the economic development meeting, so let's, let's wait on that. And then item C, counsel, I believe we have Melissa. Kevin, would you like to come and tee this one up for us, please? This is the resolution that, that the mayor and, and I had worked on to bring, bring before council, to bring $200,000 donation to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank to provide critical support. But situation has changed in the last two weeks, praise the Lord. Kevin, would you go ahead and tell us what's happening?
Sure will. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you mentioned, this is a resolution that the Kelly administration brought forward working with you. At the time, we were in the midst of the disruption of SNAP benefits because of the federal government shutdown. But through that experience, we had the opportunity to meet with Melissa of the, the food bank and got to hear more about kind of the, the pre-existing context for this exacerbation of food scarcity in our region. And so we felt strongly at the time that the thing that we could do to support the, the disruption would be to put forward some additional funding for, to support their efforts. And we, we stand by that, even, even though that those benefits have been, thank you, sir. Those benefits have been restored. We do feel like that the, the food bank could still benefit from this additional support, and that's the reason that we asked Melissa to come today to help us understand a little bit more about that. But fundamentally, we believe that it's critical that, that we're doing everything that we can as a city to meet the food scarcity needs that we know exist in our community, in our city, and then in the full 20 county region that the, that the food bank serves. So Melissa, I will invite you up to the podium at this point to answer additional questions.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi.
Hello.
Melissa, to get us started, could you please help us understand, the governor has announced that as of yesterday, the 17th, that people who were set to receive SNAP benefits on the 17th moving forward would receive those benefits as scheduled, and that on the 17th, people who would have received between the early part of November and the 17th would be made whole on the 17th. So can you help us understand where we stand now and what financial impact you have from the shutdown?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Hill and all the members of council for letting us be here today. You know, as, as you all mentioned, we worked with the mayor's office several weeks ago to outline the impact of the SNAP disruption benefits and provided some updates to this council as well. We were grateful to learn that you all had some interest in supporting this work during that critical time. As, as you mentioned, the benefits as of today for current SNAP recipients are being restored in Tennessee. So we are, we are absolutely thrilled that that's happened and that we are over that imminent crisis in our community. I'm here and happy today to provide a little bit of an update on what's happening since then. So just in terms of overall impact, our city of Chattanooga, we saw almost overnight a 50% increase in requests for food assistance. And what that looks like, just at one food pantry here off of Wilcox Boulevard, we served 4,319 households in our first 15 days of the, of the, and compared to last year, that was 3,100. So you can imagine just the sheer volume of families turning to not just our Foxwood Food Pantry, but our, a lot of our faith-based food pantries and other hunger relief organizations across Chattanooga. So what we have been doing, as you know, is purchasing more food, and that has been critical to continue the supply chain during this crisis. It's incredibly critical now as we continue to recover, to restock the shelves, and to replenish the pantries across our faith-based community.
Okay, let's see. Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Melissa, first, I want to commend you and the Chattanooga Area Food Bank, and you know, I love you all, because outside of this, I work with you all anyway, with our faith-based food pantry. So I try not to be too biased up here, but this is one of those things where I see people all the time. And so I still am, as, as the chief of staff spoke, in support of us still allocating the $200,000 to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank, because the reality is, nobody's first choice is to go to food, to the food bank. Your first choice is to go to Food City or Publix or whatever your local grocery is. And whenever you're in need of supplemental food assistance, it's never being made whole. If I need supplemental food assistance, that means there is something happening here. And in my, and over the last few weeks, I've, our people have come into our pantry, some not because they lost SNAP benefits, but because they've been laid off, because these other things are happening, things that we cannot control. So I commend you all for the work that you are doing. I am in support of this, because I know that though, I am 100% not a fan of what is going on currently on a national level, but I know that as the city of Chattanooga, whenever we have the opportunity to feed people, by all means, we should do that, because there's the opportunity here. We find money to do all these other things. And so there's no reason why we can't take a little $200,000 and give to our food, and, and give to our food bank to help those that are most, most vulnerable, because that's not, this is not, food bank is not people's first choice. This is a last, I can't remember what was on the call, is that last, it's the last line of defense before you're starving. And so this is not something to be played with. That is food, shelter, clothing, and water are basic right. And so whenever we as a city can stand and say, "We stand with you to restock your shelves," or even if your shelves were full and you just need some reserves to help feed people, we should do that, because that's the kind of city we are. We are One Chattanooga, and that's what we should be doing. So I just want to, again, commend you. Of course, always tell Ally and Rick hello, and I just appreciate the work that you do. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any other questions? Okay, I have one other, and it is for Kevin. Kevin, for, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you so much.
Kevin, for the purposes of getting on the record and for the community to be aware, can you please explain where, within our funds, this $200,000 is coming from?
Ooh, that's a great question.
It's coming from our planned, it's coming from our planned reserve.
We're gonna pull it from our contingency fund. So we plan each, thank you for that prompt, by the way.
You're welcome.
Because for a moment, I was like, where is it coming from?
Because you know where it's coming from, and you've told us, but I want it on the public record.
Thank you. So it is coming from contingency. So every year, as part of our annual budget, we do set aside funding for unexpected, non-catastrophic things that will arise as a matter of course over that year. So this money is, is funded or budgeted for, the funding is available, and contextually, with regard to how much money we have in contingency, we will still have after this proposed expenditure, contingency for the remainder of the year.
Thank you very much. Which, our remainder of our fiscal year is June 30th for the Publix.
Correct.
So lots can happen between now and then.
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like everybody's good on that. All right, counsel, we have some items under economic development. These are resolutions. We have finance resolutions related to our general obligation bond issuance, some appointments, and then parks and outdoors, public works. Police, hit your light if you have any questions or comments. All right, looks like we're good with that. We do not have a two-week agenda, because counsel will not be meeting next week because of, because of Thanksgiving. Consequently, tonight, counsel, if you will take a look at your purchases, there are many of them. We had no purchases two weeks, or two weeks ago, and now it looks like a Christmas list. If you have children, you have seen the Christmas lists already, I imagine, and we have one here. So counsel, there are many items under purchasing. Councilman Elliott.
Debbie, this is a general question about purchasing. I see we have quite a few folks ask for increases, and I know Councilman Clark has raised this question before. When we're sending out RFPs or when we're finalizing contracts, do we specify, do we apply a percentage amount or a dollar amount that contractors can ask for increases when we lock them in?
We do not. We do give contractors the option to submit a request for an increase annually, and we waive the right to either accept or deny the increase. And we have been recently, since we're getting a lot of increases, we've been negotiating back with these contractors.
What basis are we applying when we're reviewing whether to accept or deny an increase?
It depends on the percentage, what the usage is, and what the good or service is.
Okay. Are there other municipalities or procurement processes that apply increase limits? Is that a norm in procurement in other places?
We do have some, like, technology where we will put a cap on the percentage of increase, but we don't do all, because we don't know what the, the market's gonna do at any given time.
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask, and so for counsel to understand as well, you know, we see a lot of these purchases, purchases that come up, and we oftentimes don't ask questions, because they're just doing an increase. But from a fiscal perspective, like, are we just, is this a loophole for people to get more money, essentially, right? Are these increases absolutely necessary? And so I don't know that. I'm not a procurement specialist, so I, I do want to ask that, to make sure it's good steward, so.
We, we are definitely making sure that we're getting the best good and service for our dollars. That's our job. That's what we do every day. I don't take these increases lightly. This is the first, the first, the past two, a couple of years, I've seen increases come across. It depends on what's happening with the market. It's, it's the driver if we're gonna have increases or not. We can definitely look into maybe putting a percentage on each of the solicitations to make sure that the contractors know that they can't go above this percentage annually. But we do get some that ask for no increase. So we have to be careful what we ask for.
Okay. I appreciate you, Debbie.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious, I see a lot of times when we're purchasing vehicles, Ford of Dalton is on there, and I mean, I love Dalton, I do business down there, but I mean, I would love to know what our local folks have been offering us. Hopefully, they have, like, in the city of Chattanooga. They're probably more expensive, but I'd like to know that for sure.
We actually put this out for bid. There were multiple bids received, and Ford of Dalton was the low bidder.
Okay, and that, so that includes the city of Chattanooga?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions about purchases? Okay, counsel, I have one that is concerning to me. It's the new blanket agreement for security guard services. It's up to $1 million a year. And thank you very much, Debbie, for providing me with some of the requirements. I and other council members have had some concerns about the quality of services we receive from our contracts for security guard services. I know for many years, Councilwoman Coonrod would talk about her concerns related to the service in parks. I know that we, we sometimes, I, I'm concerned about the actual capability of the security guard to do their job, like, to actually patrol, to actually hear something happening. I mean, just the, the physical work of the job. In the, in the RFP items that you gave us, that you, that you provided to me, I see that we had requirements about the qualifications, the professional qualifications for the job. Are there qualif, in what way are we going to be able to protect the interests of the people of Chattanooga if a security guard is hired as a contractor who is not physically capable of doing the work?
Take it.
It's a great question. First, let me just say that we, we share the observations that you just explained, and it was part of the thinking throughout this RFP process. I worked very closely with Chief Chambers to, to put it together. In terms of physical qualifications, I, I don't know that we have the ability, it's really a legal question, I would defer to Phil, to be prescriptive about that. However, we are clear about what we need the security contractor to perform. And so if we encounter a situation where there is an individual who is serving in that capacity and unable to perform what we need them to perform with respect to what the contract requires, we would certainly lean on the contract to ensure that that gets remedied, if that makes sense.
So if consistently you walk into a city facility where we're paying up to $1 million a year for security guard services, and that security guard is asleep?
That is not going to be acceptable.
So if consistently you walk into a city facility where we're paying up to a million dollars a year for security guard services and that security guard is asleep?
That is not going to be acceptable. That's right, so it's contract management.
Because I don't see that in the, I see that we would want 24/7 coverage or film. Like, these are, these are gonna be security guards in our community centers with our children.
That's exactly right.
If someone can't, like, I get it that there's certain things you can and can't do with the job description, but you can say you have to be able to lift 40 pounds. I mean, our police service is able to say you have to be able to perform these particular physical tasks. I mean, if someone is supposed to handle a bomb threat to a, God forbid, a community center, we need to, we're paying for a security guard to be able to be aware and deliver on that. So in what way are we protecting? A park, a gun threat at a park, if our security guard can't physically walk across that park, what is the point of having that service?
Sure. Your point is well taken, I share it. And I I'd be happy if we wanted to kick this one out and let's take a fresh look and make sure that we have taken full advantage of all of the language available to us. Let's absolutely do that.
Okay, let's defer this one then until we're back on December 2nd, just a couple of weeks so that we can make sure. I I would just want some comfort in knowing that we have, we have the ability to ensure that we have quality security guards in our locations, where we do not have a police officer already.
Same.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so, yes, Councilman Harvey.
Just a question of, I'm not sure if we can even do this, but i- instead of hiring a third party security agency, are we able to offer that to some of our off duty police officers? Is that even a possibility for them, you know, like, know they're looking to make some extra money? They can help us out in the interim?
Yeah, so Chief, I might need some some help on this.
So I I think the paying them is something that would have to get worked out. Whenever you're an employee, you're paid at a position and that position equates to a specific salary. Currently, there's not a technological solution that says you can make this salary during these hours, but if you're off or if you're on these hours, then you make a different salary. So that would be a a technical challenge to do that. I think a staffing challenge would be there are more jobs out there than what we can feasibly work. There's, whether overtime opportunities or, you know, opportunities for extra jobs. There are, there's more of a demand than we have a supply. So then you would be competing in the private sector that may have, you know, more financial stability to say, we'll, we'll, we'll just outpay the city in whatever that payment is to to make sure you choose us versus them, kind of thing.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
It's it's possible, it'd be just challenging from a couple of different perspectives.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So Counsel, if someone would be so kind as to make a motion to defer this item when it comes up until December 2nd, I would appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to future considerations, please. Please hit your light if you have any questions or comments about our three week and beyond future considerations document. There are two things I think worth pointing out, Counsel. Councilman Elliott.
Yes, Richard, we, you and I can talk about this later, but I may have some questions about the missionary edge lease. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Two things worth pointing out under Public Works, item three. It's exciting to note that we will be releasing funds, be asked to vote on releasing funds December 2nd to begin some work on the Alton Park Connector, which is gonna be a really exciting project for our community, especially the folks in Alton Park and in District 7. And the other thing that was pretty interesting is the items under wastewater. Item I is that the city is going to be, the wastewater treatment plan is going to be putting in a really neat generator system that will potentially have return on investment over three to four years. I imagine we might hear about that at some point. Actually, while we're, while I'm talking about, Bill, would you come and just tell everybody about that? Or no, no, sorry, Mark, my apologies, Mark. Public Works wants to get in on it though, too.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so these, uh, these generators.
Or item one, excuse me.
So these are linear generators, which is a different generator technology than the combustion engine generators that we're used to. They're more efficient, they're also less maintenance, and they run on a variety of fuels. So with our digesters out at the wastewater plant, we can generate biofuel methane from those digesters and we can run that through these in order to generate electricity. Our electricity bill out there is on the order of $300,000 a month. These generators will knock off about a third of that. So we look to save approximately $100,000 a month on our electric bill with this first phase of these generators. We will be installing six generators in this phase. But once our digester upgrades are complete, we will be able to actually fuel six additional generators for a total of 12. And so that is like the, the longer term outlook is to have 12 generators running off of our biogas out there and knocking down nearly all of our electric bill.
Thank you very much. And word on the street is that Public Works might want to look at it for landfill also. Exciting stuff. Okay, Counsel, do I have any questions, final questions about future considerations? Okay, we're gonna get in the Wayback Machine. Thank you very much, Vice Chairwoman. And we're going to do, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting, please.
Don't move.
Thank you, it takes, it takes a team. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes with a proper second. Minutes will stand without objection. If you object, hit your light. All right, we're good to go on that. Okay, so we have finished that work. I will go ahead and note that we will have an attorney client meeting this afternoon. So after our department report and Economic Development Committee, we will take a 45 minute recess to allow for that. And I will now hand, well, no, we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the library come up first, please. And give us a department report, thank you, Will.
All right, thank you so much, good evening, Counsel. My name is Will O'Hearn, I'm the Executive Director of the Chattanooga Public Library. I'm excited to give you our department update here. Before we go into it, it will be an interactive presentation. What I mean is hopefully during the time of your break, you might have a little time to go out. We've brought our van, our outreach van, it's Poppy outside. So we're hoping you can go and experience and see what our patrons are experiencing as they go out and to our outreach. We also have some of our Beyond Books collection, some of the new and unique offerings you might not expect a library to have be out there. So you can kind of get a taste and flavor of what we have to provide. A lot to get into and not a lot of time, so I'll keep moving here. If I could define the Chattanooga Public Library with one word from this quarter as we compare this fiscal year quarter one to last fiscal year quarter one, is growth. We've seen actually exponential growth across the system in the time I've been here, about the past two years. To put this in context, we've seen numbers for attendance, people coming into our building. It's on track to go over 450,000 people this year to come to all five of our library locations. Again, putting that in context, that's almost double those individuals who go to a Tennessee Titans game and about two thirds of all those who go to volunteer games. So pretty good numbers right there. The other thing to look at here, and what do those other numbers look like that are impressive, are gonna be our program participants. We are almost at 40,000 program participants. That's 23% increase from the previous quarter one. And to put that into context, when I first got here, we had about 60,000 total participants for the whole year. So we're already about two thirds with one quarter of what we did about two years ago. So you're seeing lots and lots of growth within the library system, a lot of demand for our programs in particular. We're also seeing a lot of outreach interactions, we really put our shoulder behind that. Our outreach department was formed, it was zero, now it's two, so it's a small but mighty department. And 6,000 plus outreach interactions, that's a total of 67% increase from last quarter. And to be clear, that's built on a 100% increase from the year previous. So again, you're seeing compounding growth within the library. We have almost 20,000 active digital users, individuals going online using our services, maybe not even coming to the library. And then we have over 100,000 items borrowed. And the good news is these program attendance, this is not just a library trend, this is a Chattanooga Public Library trend. A lot of libraries are seeing stagnant or dipping people coming to the library, lowering. We're seeing actually higher. And then while they are seeing some numbers of growth of programming, not double digits certainly. So we're really excited about that. And the reason for that, very frankly, is all of you. You invested in our facilities last year by approving the budget and we thank you so much for your support for that. You were able to make a lot of that happen. We were able to do more because we had more folks doing the good work of the Chattanooga Public Library. So for example, we had facility staff that were able to help put in a curb cut for the North Gate location, which made the library more accessible and literally reduced obstacles to using the library. We had some tripping hazards out there. Those outreach numbers are, again, we put an outreach specialist within there. So we expect those numbers to continue to go up because we have more, again, horsepower behind that. And then upcoming is a social worker role. The library is seeing more and more folks needing social service support. We went from one UTC intern to three UTC interns. And what happens with them is they come for a semester or two, then leave. We need someone to consistently be a contact for these individuals and build trust. So we're really excited about that. Many times people go to the library when they're in crisis. We're up to help you with a job application or apply for LIHEAP, which we'll talk about later on. But our staff is just not equipped to be able to help people with the social services that we're seeing an increase in. So we're excited to see that role and the impact it could have. So at the end of the day, it's not just the usage, but that investment in the Chattanooga Public Library is access, safety and reach of the Chattanooga Public Library. And we thank you for that. So the rest of our presentation is gonna be talking about our strategic plan. We've given you a copy, a paper copy of that plan. It's gonna be a website that's gonna go live here tomorrow. Our board has approved that plan, but you were the first folks to be able to see it out in the public, on the wild. So you're on the inner loop. To be clear, this plan is a philosophical and visionary plan. It's ironically a pretty quick read from the library for a strategic plan. But we will have one year goals, at least two goals for every single one of the five focuses we have. And that's gonna allow us to be consistent in our values, what we care about, what we want to put our shoulder behind, but also nimble and agile enough to be able to to pivot based off, you know, anything that happens. So we think it's kind of the best of both worlds in that way. I'll go through each of these five areas and tell you a little bit about where we're headed and what we're doing. The first area of focus, and if it looks familiar, it's actually the same five areas of focus that we talked about last time at the March 11th update. First area of focus is gonna be lowering barriers to access. The big thing we did here was actually going fine free for all our materials. Last year, we went fine free for youth materials and we haven't seen any statistical change within the return date or the number of items returned. So it hasn't really impacted anything in that way. People are still returning their items, no worries there. If you ever want to believe in people, work at the library, people do what they, you're supposed to do if you ask them very nicely. The other thing is we think the resources of the Chattanooga Public Library are much more valuable in the hands of people rather than the small amount of fines and fees we collect from them. So while $20 may not seem like a lot to you or I if you forget to check out those 20 kids books, and I have more than that, and I've had fines in the past too, that may just be a small inconvenience, but for some folks, that can literally box them out of the library and keep them from using them. And some of those folks need our library the most. Two, we want new and improved facilities. The good news is about 50 years ago, the, our community put a lot, a big investment within the library, building three different locations within about five years. The downtown library, North Gate and East Gate. The bad news is about, buildings last about 50-ish years. The downtown library looks like a fort, it's also built like a fort. So it's doing pretty well, but our North Gate and East Gate locations are charitably at the end of their life right now. So we need to replace or renovate those. Other thing we need is we know we need an expansion of our library system. 37421 East Brainerd, we definitely know we need one there. We've heard time and time again, all our research has shown that we need a location out there. For the past 15, 10 years, that's, all the studies have shown, that's what we should have. It's a growing area as well. And literally, the community has asked that in our PA survey. It was the second most requested thing they wanted. The first was a pickleball court. Maybe we'll be able to do both, how about that? And then we've also seen an increased use need for space. In our virtual world, people have gone away from offices, but they still need an occasional place to meet with a client, do an online interview, something like that. So we are actually giving a meeting room for checkout for people to use. They can use their library card to have a space they can check out. We're gonna see how that works. I think we're doing like a four to six size one to kind of gauge the interest. If there's more, we will continue to provide more based off the responsiveness of the community. Third area of focus is gonna be outreach. And I'm gonna remind you again, Poppy, closer to City Hall, didn't get the best parking spot, is gonna be down the road there, there's Poppy in the background. It's not a bookmobile, but more of an outreach mobile. It's a full, small library, it has programs, activities, of course, books at the back as well, too. It can make cards. And it's a really great way for us to be geographically diverse in our outreach. We really want to meet people where they're at. The Field of Dreams days of if you build it, they will come or gone. We have to actively go out and meet our community where they're at. So that's really critically important to us. While we'd love to have a library in every single district, our budget may say otherwise. Be happy to talk to you guys about that if you'd like to. But we want to be good financial stewards and still ensure that every single part of Chattanooga has library services actively being delivered to it. So with that in mind, we want three or more outreach events per district. We're gonna hit that beginning of the calendar year, so we're gonna increase that going forward. And the other area of focus is on senior engagement. Seniors are often overlooked and have more trouble coming into the library. So we want to, again, meet them where they're at and we want a 15% increase in those intentional senior outreaches. Partnerships and collaboration, this is one that'd be near and dearest to my heart. I really think we all work better when we all are together. You may know about a read and ride program where we partner with Carter, offer no cost bus passes to any student in Hamilton County. We're seeing about a little under 400 people a day use that. We saw, actually, in the last two or three months, we've seen a 20% increase of number of people using that and 40,000 total people using that in, since the inception. But we're also working with Carter to have a shuttle that connects West Side residents to the library. Once a month, we're getting a special charter bus to come out to the West Side. And while it's not so physically far away from the library, it is under a bridge. There's not good infrastructure as it goes there. And we want to be really intentional to the West Side residents that you belong here and we want you in the library and we hope you use it. We've just had one, we had about 20 individuals use that and they were very excited and they said they're gonna bring a friend next time. So hopefully, we continue that partnership with our great partner, Carter. You may know about our YMCA partnership where we are, our summer, we are, every single library location was a summer feeding site. And then all year round, our Avondale and Downtown Libraries are summer feeding sites. Particularly important with, again, now SNAP benefits just coming back, but particularly important, highlighted recently. But we also partnered with our great partner, the YMCA, on a library fitness kit, which is basically a kind of workout in a bag, for lack of a better term. One of them has like bands, resistance bands, it has some dumbbells in it, so it's a little heavy. It even has combat ropes, which are those CrossFit ropes you see. And I learned a new word when we put these together, combat ropes. And we're really happy to check those out to our community so people can try that or decide they want to join the Y instead. And then we just don't look outward for partnerships, we also look inward. The Office of Family Empowerment, they took the lead on this, they were proactive, has seen LIHEAP. And if you don't know, LIHEAP is essentially a program that helps folks with funding for winter warming, keeps people's houses warm during the winter, has gone all digital this year. So before in the past, it was on paper. For many of the folks who use LIHEAP, lower socioeconomic status, older folks, they're not as digitally proficient. Office of Family Empowerment was proactive, got on top of this, contacted community development in the library and said, hey, how can we work together on this? They gave us training, they came to our all staff meeting and they even send staff members to the library. We've had over 300 individuals since November 1st come to the library. And to be clear, this is about an hour and a half and two hour process for someone who knows how to work a computer well. So we're really proud of that and it makes a big difference to help support our community. We see better outcomes when we all work better together and I think you can see that from here. I know I'm going along on time, so I'm gonna quick up, go here. Expansion of Beyond Books, you heard about our workout in a bag. We also have added a toy library to the mix. So enriching educational toys are now checkoutable and they're very, very popular. So we've added that and we're gonna continue to add more unique things to the collection to surprise and delight people. And we're also making it so those collections can go to each branch. So we just don't want it at our downtown library. Every single library location is special and deserves those services at them. So we're working hard to make them more accessible by being portable. In one in time, we always have lots going on and I always love to invite you for a conversation about what we're doing in the future and how we can work together. But the big thing I want to highlight from this slide is the Downtown Library's 50th year anniversary. Save the date, October 17th is gonna be the big day, the birthday, turn the big five zero. So come on down, we'd love to see you then, lots of other stuff going on. But with that, I just want to say thank you so very much. Again, Poppy's gonna be out over there, I hope you get some time during that 45 minute break to come on down, check it out. Otherwise, I just want to thank you for your investment and support of the Chattanooga Public Library and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Dotley.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Will, as always, I am just so excited about the library and all the work that you do. I just want to say, good job. I mean, because this said it all, we get regular updates, get a chance to go out and be with your staff in the communities. I'm excited to go this December.
You're gonna have a blast.
With them. And just thank you because, you know, it's a little touch and go a couple of years ago. But now you all are rocking and rolling and I'm excited about the work that you're doing on a shoestring budget at that.
Thank you very much.
So we appreciate you, Will, and your entire staff.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, thank you.
I have a great, great team, thank you.
Councilman Harvey.
Yeah, I just want to echo the same thing, Will, you're awesome. Appreciate everything you do for the library. You're killing it, I mean, it's just, it's great. I'm a proud library card holder, my wife and myself, and we spent, I spent a little bit too much time in the genealogy section.
That's the discretionary. That's what's at play here is the decision whether that discretionary tax should be used to reimburse for the infrastructure. So again, if you're looking at these numbers based on a third-party economic analysis, that 154,000, that's proposed to be an incremental tax would be available. Keeping in mind, that 154 is that, am I missing a zero there? Is that final number that we're looking at? The city has already taken out its debt service, 25% is always taken out for debt service, and there's additional fee that is always removed as well. So again, incremental revenue comes in, but we make sure debt service is preserved, school taxes are preserved, administrative fees are preserved. So again, this is just sort of the graph we've been showing. And then if you look at how that stair stepped, that stair stepped because as we look at reassessments that happen and growth, additional increment is proposed to grow if the developer's doing what they're supposed to be doing to grow, to grow the area. And so again, that orange piece, that's what's at play here, keeping in mind the base taxes remain in place. And so let's just kind of dive into the economic impact plan. So again, setting the district's priority tax base, property tax base at 2024. And again, that's that green number, that 522,000 currently receiving and will continue to receive. And then if you look at the next one, the proposed 154,000, again, that's the first year increment that's based on the growth that we see happening at Northgate Mall now, the growth that's online and coming online in the next couple of months. That's where that increment is generated. And if you take those incremental, that incremental tax growth, again, minus the debt service, minus the fees, and that gets calculated out 20 years, you're looking at roughly a $3.3 million TIF. Remember, it's an $8.9 million project. We're generating $3.3 million TIF. Staff proposed this to be a conservative TIF. The TIF district could have been expanded to include other areas, but we felt like it was important to keep it in a smaller district that was manageable. And so that's where we're looking at that maximum three point, that 3.3 that's generated. Now, keep in mind, as other development happens within that property and those other properties come online, this number could go up. That 3.3 could go up and should go up if the developer is actually developing as they say they're developing. So again, put the infrastructure in place, get additional retailers, you get additional, you get a hotel, you get apartments, whatever you get, if they're generating additional property taxes, that number will grow, which is great for the city because that means there's less property tax that has to be used, if you're, less sales tax that's used if you're pulling from the property tax. So again, that's sort of that piece. There have been conversations around why the, why the base year 2024 and why not 2025? Two reasons for that. We could easily move out the base year to 2025. And what that would look like is we would have roughly an additional $89,000 on that $522,000 base. So the base, our base would grow up. I mean, it would go up. Their increment, increment would go down. And it just means on the back end, we're adding another year. So we're, we're shifting it all. We're adding another year on the back end, which means there's more money that the increment, the developer is going to capture on the back end and less money and longer for us to get all of our money back into general fund. The other piece is related to the reappraisal of the BJ's. So that, for instance, the BJ's is coming online soon. We know that. It will be operational. If it is, and if we move the tax year to 2025, when it becomes operational, if it is assessed, reassessed in 2025, we lose that increment. So you've basically lost your increment. Again, if it's reassessed in 2026, we capture the increment and it's like nothing has changed. And so staff is recommending that we stick with the base year of 2024 because the key to this particular TIF district is seeding the district with a couple of projects that we know will make it successful and generate some increment and generate some momentum to make some things happen. So those are the two, two reasons why we're still looking at and recommending 2024 as a base year for this particular district. Let me move on to the BUT4. Councilwoman Burst did ask for, did, we did not waive the BUT4 requirement. And as a result of that, the third-party reviewer came back and said, you know what? Based on all the parameters and looking at all the information, the BUT4 does exist. Were it not for these particular public financing incentives, this project probably will not happen. The developer would be in a negative position if the developer were to undertake the project, which means it's unlikely the developer would undertake replacing $9 million of infrastructure. Having said that, the next recommendation from the third-party reviewer was, in order for this to be sort of a standard reasonable rate of return for a commercial real estate project, it should fall anywhere from 20, 12 to 20%. So the third-party reviewer recommended anywhere from public financing assistance in the range of 7.7 million to 8.7 million. Again, recognizing it's an $8.9 million project. So staff is going to recommend, when council considers this item for vote on December 2nd, staff is going to recommend that we amend the EIP. It currently reads as 9.2. And so again, when the developer applied for this particular incentive, all of the documents had 9.2 million in it. Based on the recommendation coming back from the third-party reviewer, we're going to ask that that be amended down to 8.7. So that's on the EIP. And again, this is just for the property tax piece. And because the property tax piece does not provide enough funding, we now move into having a conversation around the local option sales tax piece. And so I'm going to transition into that slide now. So I'm going to give a quick overview on the local option sales tax. And so high-level sales tax rate in Hamilton County has two components. There's a state component that's 7%, and then there's a local portion that's 2.25%. Local option refers to the state law that provides an option to municipalities to collect up to 2.75% sales tax on top of the state sales tax. And so the state of Tennessee website has this particular sort of interactive map on it. And so if you look at it, you can see Hamilton County in at 2.7, 2.25%. And then you can see two or three adjacent counties that are at 2.75. And so what happens is businesses collect sales tax, they collect both portions, they remit it to the state, state sends it to the, back to the counties, the county portion back to the county, county takes the school taxes out of it and then remits the remainder to the respective cities. The city of Chattanooga, when they, when we get our sales tax piece, our 1.125 remaining piece, that goes into our general fund. Keeping in mind, we've paid the school portions, the other piece goes into our general fund. And so that's, that's the sales tax, that's, that's what it is, it's how it's captured, it's where it goes, it goes to our general fund. For this particular project, we're looking at defining a sales tax area. So if you've got the entire TIF district here, and if you look at the items that are outlined in red, I'm calling that kind of the crescent that's at the very bottom of the TIF district. That's what the developer is proposing as a sales tax area. And I, and I'll stop here and say, the core of the mall is not located in the sales tax area because at some point, because of that's the enclosed mall, at some point, there will be demolition that will take parts of that mall offline. And because of that, and because of the associated leases, and we don't know the timeframe on all of that, the next two to three to four years, that is not included in the sales tax area. And so let's look at the inter-local sales tax agreement, and we're getting close. We've got three more slides. And so, again, we're looking to mirror what we did with the EIP on the property tax, and we want to set the base year for 2024. And so if you look at that, if we were to look at that red area, that sales tax area, the base year for 2024 was $560,000 in sales tax, the 1.125% that went into the general fund. Keeping in mind, debt service is paid, additional fees are paid, this is what's left over, goes into the general fund. That, that will always stay in place, that will never be spent. That's that baseline. And then if you want to look at the orange, that's where we're saying the incremental growth is projected to be 540,000. Again, that's taking out schools, taking out all of those other things, that's looking at, if we were to take the projected incremental growth, take the 1.125% of that based on the third-party economic analysis, this is probably the number we're looking at, a maximum up to. That does not mean that your base is 560 and the very next day, you're capturing an additional 540. You could be capturing an additional 200,000, you could be capturing an additional 300,000. But again, you could capture an additional 600,000. But again, it's setting a maximum that's based on what's the interest rate, what's the interest on top of the cost of developing the project or replacing the infrastructure? What's that number? And then backing into, what's a reasonable amount of increment that should be allocated for reimbursement? And why the reimbursement is important is because if you are a developer and you're working a project and you're securing financing on your own, again, developer-backed TIF, they're going to secure their own financing, promising or allocating or approving the use of these particular increments for reimbursement assists them in getting financing for the project. That's what that BUT4 foot. Were it not for the pledging of these particular revenues, the developer potentially would not be able to get financing to do the infrastructure project on their own. So that's kind of where that BUT4 comes into place. And so by the numbers, again, originally, the, the 9.2 million that was in the original document, that was construction costs plus closing expenses. So again, we had a BUT4 analysis done, it came back and said, we're recommending 8.7, so we're going to ask that to come down. You've got the estimated total cost of the project, and then you've got limitations on the allocations. And what that means is basically, we're saying, property taxes could outperform, sales taxes could outperform, there's still a cap that we're putting on place that would be available for reimbursement of the particular project. Ooh, we're close. Project alignment. So this goes back to just sort of how we got here. And this came up when we were going through the application review process. One of the application review committee members asked, what prevents any developer from coming to the table and just asking for an incentive? And so what happens is, within the economic development sort of ecosystem, and I, and it's the chamber, and it's River City, and it's, it's Southeast Tennessee Development District, it's the city of Chattanooga, it's Hamilton County, we look to these community-informed plans when we are working on projects and working with incentives and economic development tools to help make these projects happen. And so again, we're looking at the one Chattanooga Plan related for infrastructure, updating all the outdated infrastructure that we have within the city. We're looking at sort of the RPA Plan, there's one that was approved in 2003 by then city council, which was related to Northgate. And then we've got a draft plan Chattanooga for Hickson Red Bank, which specifically points to redevelopment of Northgate Mall into a walkable town center type format. And again, I mentioned earlier, some of the previous Tennessee enclosed mall projects, this is what those TIFs look like. So Goodlandsville, Oak Ridge, Nashville, Kingsport, again, those TIFs were used for a variety of things. One of those malls was actually closed and shuttered for 12 years, and so the owner applied for a TIF, and that TIF was for demolition. One was building hotels, vertical construction, that TIF was for, again, vertical construction. We have others that were a combination of vertical construction and infrastructure. So again, this is not a new tool as it relates to enclosed malls, it's been used throughout the city, throughout the state before. And then these are some of the questions that I received earlier today that I was not able to incorporate into the presentation, but I will take any questions. I do have our legal counsel, who represents our TIFs and bonds, Mark Mamantoff is here to answer questions. I've got Weston Brooks from my team, who's been working closely with some of the council members today on answering questions. And so I'm open for questions and look forward to it. It's been a busy morning with questions.
All right, we got quite a few on the board, starting with Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a few questions, so when my time's up, you know, you just cut me off. Sharita, does the, does the base, whether we use 24, 2024, 2025, will the base, and I want to make sure we get this on the record, will the base increase anytime there is a tax, a property tax increase? Do you understand my question? And Mark shaking his head, no. So that base is frozen? While everybody else's base is going up, this is frozen?
Yeah, we could fix that.
I wanted to make sure I understood that.
Sir, can you stand up, please?
Our legal counsel is answering that question.
I'm sorry, that was rude, I didn't mean to be, it was like, yeah, the state law freezes the base taxes, they don't go up with a property tax increase. Could we adapt the plan to do that, or do it in the development agreement? Yes. But legally, the answer is it's frozen based on the year.
And I think that, I think that needs to happen. If everybody else's base is going to go up, I think this base needs to go up with a tax increase. That this, that this or any council, for 20 years, that's a pretty long time to have your base frozen. Sharita, I noticed it looked to me like we've increased the size of our sales tax area. We're capturing more sales tax. I thought, I thought we were basically talking about BJ's and Culversons, and it looks like to me now we've enlarged that. And, and you made the statement, this is what the developer is proposing. What are we proposing?
So we are proposing that larger crescent area.
Because?
Because state law prohibits, prohibits us from pinpointing sales tax from particular retailers or parcels or properties. And so we would need to grab from a larger district. We can't just grab from one or two projects. It would be the equivalent of saying, I'm going to grab property taxes from your business. And then someone would be able to determine the sales from your business.
You, I mean, you, we create, we create the area though for the sales tax, right?
We do create the area, yes, sir.
Which, one, two, three, four, there looks like there's four separate areas. We could just pinpoint that one area that captures BJ's and Culversons, correct?
Yes, we could.
Okay. The next thing I had mentioned to you about creating a C-Bid, because obviously, everybody around this loop is going to benefit from this redevelopment, I mean, from this infrastructure improvement, from better infrastructure to hopefully at some point, foot traffic because of the development. I think you had responded with an assessment district. Is, what makes, what makes an assessment district, in your opinion, more beneficial or better than a C-Bid? And how do you, how do you go about assessing who's going to pay what? Because everybody else's property values, I think, are going to be increased compared to CBL's properties. And it would look like to me that the, it would be out of balance that, that CBL would wind up paying less of an amount than the people that are around the, or in that loop and have higher property values.
And Councilman, if I could, to add on to this, Sharita, can you explain the difference between assessment district and a C-Bid for those who aren't familiar?
Yeah, I can do that.
Settle on your question, Councilman.
Yeah, I'm, okay. Thank you.
I'm bad about getting in the weeds, so I'm sorry, but there's about five or six different state laws that allow you to do special assessments. C-Bid is just one subcategory. So when we talk about assessment, C-Bid is just one type of special assessment. The more, the new statute that you're, almost certainly are going to have somebody come in front of you asking for a special assessment is what everybody's talking about. That's why probably Sharita mentioned a special assessment. That likely would not work here because every single property owner would have to join in the petition, has to be unanimous. So all, all of the property owners would have to come to you all and say, yes, please tax me, and it's probably not real likely that...
For the special assessment district?
For, it's actually called an infrastructure development district, the legal term is that what we're calling those.
As opposed to C-Bid?
And yeah, of course, a C-Bid, there's two ways to create a special C-Bid. You have one downtown, I worked on this years ago, where we amended that law to basically, you can have, you can have 20 C-Bids in Chattanooga now, if you should choose, you can put one in every single sort of commercial area. But that one too, the C-Bid law is a little bit antiquated. You, either 50% of the property owners based on assessed value have to ask for it, or basically you guys have to cram it down their throat. So you have those two alternatives. If you wished to create a C-Bid, that's really, I, I promised Sharita, I'm sorry, Councilman Henderson, I don't have it to you yet, but I'm glad to, I can walk you through this, you know, here are the steps that you would if you want to create a C-Bid. But basically, you all, it's, it'd be difficult for them to get the 50% threshold quickly to create a C-Bid. You all would probably have to impose that upon them if you should choose to do that.
And if I can, sir, so, where I'm clarifying this for everybody.
Yeah.
A C-Bid, the process to put a fee or some type of financial levy over a particular geographic area is one that either 50% of the business owners will have to agree to, or that governing body, the council, would have to impose. And a special assessment district is one that X amount of the owners would have to agree to participate in. Is that correct?
That always a good summary, except a C-Bid is just one type of special assessment. It is, yeah, it is, it is a special, it's not a fee, it's a special assessment.
But basically, that's the difference between the two things we're referring to, correct?
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
No, you summarized it really well, but it's, a C-Bid is just one type of special assessment. You have to create a special assessment management corporation, a C-Bid, so you've got to get people to serve on that. And then, and, and there's two types, more than again, there's two types of C-Bid. There's also another antiquated statute that, that you could, we could possibly use, again, that, but you...
But for this purposes, those are the two.
For a special assessment.
And for Councilman Henderson.
Yeah.
You wanted to know the, the virtue of the one over the other, is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, I had proposed to Sharita a C-Bid, and she had responded with the special assessment district.
Okay.
But it sounds like, in this case, a special assessment district.
Well, yeah, and I was going to conclude.
Would not be applicable, or?
If there's one last statute, there is, there's a pure special assessment district that could be applicable, you all would have to agree unanimously to impose it on them. It's very protective of the property owners, so if any of you all decide you don't want to vote for it, it would not allow that to be imposed.
So it has to be 100%?
Of this body.
From this body?
Yes.
Okay.
It was intended to be very protective of property owners that you couldn't cram down specialized, it's not that, it's the easiest fit for this because you don't have to create the special corporation to run it. The CBI did, we'd have to create a special corporation, but that one would be easier to impose if you so should choose to do that.
Well, when you say a special corporation, you're just basically meaning a committee?
No, it's actually, they call it a corporation.
They just call it a corporation?
Yes, yeah. You could tell the ID asked nicely, the IDB to do it, as long as it says you, the IDB can serve in that purpose, but they are separately incorporated.
Okay. And then, and then the last thing is the water infrastructure. If, I feel like that we haven't explored all the avenues with the water companies that we have in Chattanooga to say, yeah, we want to include that in, in this 9.8, well, I guess we're lowering that now to 8.7. I would like to do a little bit more homework and research, Sharita, for the administration to see if we can't have that funded separately or differently from the, from the TIF and the sales tax.
And I, I am looking into that. I have one other council person that was concerned about the water lines as well.
Okay, all right.
And, and I do want to reiterate, when, when we talked about higher taxes, like if taxes go up, everyone's still paying, everyone's paying whatever the higher rate is. Earlier, when you, when you, when you were talking about the freezing of the taxes?
Well, I was referring to the, to the base.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I'm assuming, well, no, I mean, I'm assuming, but from what Mark is saying, that we would have to include the provision for that base to increase as property taxes increase. Because basically, what we're saying is, this was the property tax for 2024, that's the base.
Correct.
But I don't, in my opinion, I do not think it should be frozen there for 20 years. They should be subject to the same increase in property tax as everybody else in Chattanooga.
Mr. Councilman, I think Phil just clarified this for me as well. According to Phil, I don't know if you want to say this, but if there is a property tax increase levied, all of the owners will have to pay that new rate, but we would receive everything from that base amount, that 521, what is this, Sharita?
522.
522. The city will receive the 522, and any additional revenue would go to pay off the increment, if that makes sense. And Phil, you can clarify if I got to do that wrong.
One minor qualification that if you don't mind, is that 25% of the growth goes to the city, so you will capture 25% of that growth through, under the plan. But 75% of the increase would go to the increment.
But that, but it would help us capture some growth.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't say that clearly the first time, but you would capture 25% of the growth through the plan because you're retaining 25%.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chair. And Sharita, piggyback off of that really quickly, is it possible to, if there's an increase in revenue for the increment, is it possible that this could be paid off quicker than a 20-year allotment?
That's the hope, that's the goal, yes.
That's the goal, okay, just want to make sure.
Well, let me, and let me follow up with that.
Go ahead, Council.
So it's either, I lost the screen there. It's, it's either 8.7 million, is that what, is that what the EIP was? Yeah, it's either 8.7 or 20 years, correct? Mark shaking his head, yes.
Yes, 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 yes. There's a cap on it.
Because you made a statement, you made a statement earlier, if we use the 2025, it puts another year on the back end.
Well, that's if we're moving, if we're, if we're, if it's a 20-year TIF and we're moving the start year.
I got, okay, I see what you're saying.
Then we're, then we're just moving.
We're not adding another year to the TIF, we're just shifting the years.
Oh, thank you for that correction, yeah.
We're shifting the years of the start.
Okay, okay. Next up, we have Councilman Davis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a statement, a couple of questions, and another statement.
For sure, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I'm glad Councilman Henderson mentioned about kind of the water aspect of the project. So y'all will recall when we first had our initial discussion about this, that I serve also on the Board of Commissioners for Hickson Utility District, so when we're talking about reaching out to water companies, that would be the one that's in their, their service area. And at that point, we weren't looking at any sort of financial contribution from the water company, and so there was no conflict. And I'm not sure exactly what we're looking at now moving forward, but just wanted to assure the council that if there's any deliberations about any involvement by Hickson Utility District, I'll certainly recuse myself from that. And of course, if there's any vote related to that as well, I certainly don't want to do anything that would jeopardize any of the, the work that the city's doing here. So just wanted to, to give that legal disclaimer again, here on the front end. So Sharita, for those of us who are newer to council, can you give us an idea of how this TIF compares to previous TIFs that the city has done in terms of the overall cost and the scope of it?
I, I will say that of the, of these six TIFs that we currently have in place, all of them are compliant and performing with the exception of one TIF. That, and that's the TIF in East Chattanooga Rising, that's, that's staff's next area of focus. We currently have an RFP out for those parcels, we're currently talking to developers about future development. I was in a community meeting last night, I was in one last week. And that one, honestly, it, we just haven't had, because it was a project that didn't have a developer leading the charge, it left city at the table running things. And honestly, we dropped the ball on that one. You know, we just, we just didn't give it the attention that we needed to. So that's, that's our next focus. We're heavy in on East Chattanooga Rising. All of the other ones have performed to date, they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. So if there's a TIF and the first two phases are supposed to be infrastructure, they're building infrastructure. building infrastructure. If it's a stiff, a TIF, and they're supposed to be doing vertical development, that's funding the infrastructure, that has happened. All of the, we have five where increments coming in, I'm sure you saw the county auditors' report on TIFs, that came back. There were one or two items that were not correct in that report, so we'll correct that. But that basically said, our TIFs are performing as they were designed to perform. This one, again, is different in that it is straight infrastructure. And so it's a different animal, and how we talk about it is a little different, because we're basically saying, we need to replace the stuff that's underground so we can build stuff above ground. And we're not sure what the above-ground stuff is going to be, but first, we know we've got to do the below-ground stuff. And so that's very different from saying, here's this complex, or here's a community center, or here are these other things that we're building, and the infrastructure's just part of that. So we're comfortable with where we are with our existing TIFs. I think I did mention to council last time, we are looking at economic development software to help us track all of that, because we, we have multi-millions of dollars tied up in TIFs, and we need to be managing that and managing those projects in a, in a more proactive, a more proactive way. That answered one of your questions, I think you had three in there, and I forgot the other two.
Well, what I was really trying to get at is just in terms of, I guess, the dollar amount of city tax funds that are going towards those other TIFs, how this one will compare, compared to, you know, the, whether it be the stadium or the bend, where it kind of ranks in terms of, of that.
I think that's a difficult question to answer, because again, it's for infrastructure. And we won't, we won't know until, until the developer starts to produce other projects that happen as a result of the infrastructure.
And then, in your presentation, I think we got screenshots of the actual economic impact plan and the sales tax agreement. When will we actually be getting those documents?
We should be able to attach those today to, okay.
Can you send those to Nicole so she can distribute it?
Yes, Winston's going to email those to you. My apologies, I thought those were going to be attached to the hyperlinks that were on the Economic Development Committee item today on the agenda, and they were not.
Okay, okay. And just kind of in closing, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, there's a lot of excitement in the Hickson area for the, the prospects of this TIF project. You know, for years, the North Gate area was kind of the center, not just for kind of commerce, but it was just a gathering place for folks in the Hickson community, a real point of community pride. And it's kind of like all-in-closed malls, from what I understand, has fallen by the wayside. And everyone I've talked to really wants to see it revitalized, redeveloped in some way. And I know there's some question and maybe some concern about what might eventually be developed there, and, and none of us can kind of predict what that might be. But for me, I think the bottom line is, unless this infrastructure is fixed, nothing meaningful can be redeveloped there, right? And so that's an important piece to me. Another important piece is, if you look at the history of the North Gate area, so it was developed originally before Hickson was annexed into the city. And so typically, that infrastructure that was built would have been turned over to the city to maintain all these decades since then, but it wasn't. And so the property owners have borne all of that expense while the city has, you know, reaped the property tax and the sales tax revenues from that property. And one of the Industrial Development Board members kind of said it best, I think, when he said, "It only seems right at this point that the city should get involved now and revitalize this infrastructure to make sure this area doesn't become rundown or an eyesore, so that it can once again kind of be the center of the Hickson community, whatever that exactly might look like." So I'm, just like many of the folks in Hickson, I'm very excited about this project. And I see at least one face in the crowd, Greg Taylor, who was on the Industrial Development Board. Greg is the president of the largest HOA in Hickson, also involved with Friends of Hickson and Kiwanis. It was important when I was selecting a member from our district to be on that Industrial Development Committee that looked at this project, that I had someone like Greg, who's very involved in the community, to make sure we're getting the voice of the community, and I feel like we're getting that. Again, I would encourage all of you all to come out tomorrow morning to the Friends of Hickson meeting, where we'll be talking about this. And if you're not tired of talking about it by then, I'm also having a town hall meeting on Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 at the North River Civic Center, which is just a stone's throw from the mall. So again, I'm excited about this project. I'll be careful, as I said on the front end, to protect from any conflict of interest, not just on this side, but also on the Hickson Utility District side, and look forward to seeing this move forward.
You good, Councilman?
Hey.
Thanks, sir. Next up, we have Councilman Dotley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So my question's just simple, I just wanted some clarity, because you know, sometimes TIFs can get quite complicated. So I just want to make sure I got all this right for simplicity for me. The TIF costs 8.9 million dollars, right? No, the cost of the project is 8.9 million dollars, all right. And so you're going to be asking to amend the EIP to 8.7 million dollars. Is this right, am I on?
That is, that is correct, that's based on the third-party reviewer, but this council could set the TIF at 8.9 million.
Okay, you just threw that in there, I, you just, that's your job, that's your job. Okay, so at current, though, and I think I heard you say this earlier, at current, this TIF will only generate 3.3 million dollars.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's, that's based on the current projections we have for the existing projects that have recently, recently been completed and are currently under, under construction and coming online.
Right, and because of that, only generating 3.3 million dollars, it need a little assistance, is this right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm trying to talk, talk it out so I can explain to people. Need a little assistance, a little something. So our assistance, then, that you're recommending is the local option sales tax, which is at 1.1 to 5%.
That's correct.
Okay, and the tax base that will be, that you're recommending using, it's a 2024 tax base, this, okay, and this is a developer-backed TIF, meaning that they will get all the funds and do everything upfront, and then we will reimburse them for the 8.7 million dollars that's in, or whatever the council decides to do.
Correct.
Correct. And then, just listening to Councilman Davis, which he just made a wonderful, I love, I love what you got going on over there. I love what he just said about, you know, North Gate has been paying taxes, and we have benefited, even though they've decreased, they still have been paying it. CBL has been paying taxes, and we have benefited from those things. At some point, there needs to be some investments into the Hickson, North Gate area, so I agree with that. And then also, another point that Councilman Davis made was about the infrastructure itself, because Hickson was annexed into the city of Chattanooga, but the, the infrastructure is still privately owned. When this TIF is done, will it go back, will it turn into public infrastructure at that point?
That is correct, it will. And so the, the portions that will become public will be dedicated over to the city.
Okay, well, that's easy for me to explain. Thank you so much, Sharita, I appreciate it. And thank you, Councilman Davis, for the information you provided.
You good, Councilwoman?
Yeah, oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, thank you.
Chair Womill.
Thank you. Got a couple housekeeping questions, and then a bigger-picture vision question. I, I agree with Councilwoman Dotley that it's critical that all of our districts get investment in Hickson, is, is long overdue for investment, economic development, investment like this. That said, it's got to be the right one, and we've got to get a deal that works for the taxpayers, and that, that works for the taxpayers, that works for the people of Hickson, and that obviously pencils out fiscally for the investors themselves. So couple, couple housekeeping items. We talked about the fact that the city will capture 25% of the increment, and as that increment goes up, we will capture that. However, based on the projections, what I'm hearing you all say, what Mark say, and you say, is that, that 25% is anticipated to be the money to cover the debt and the fees. With the projection for this economic development growth, do we anticipate any, anything of, any increment that actually would benefit the city, that we would be able to invest in projects of our own?
So that, that 25% is for city debt, just, just to clarify, I want to make sure everyone understands, it's not debt associated to this particular project.
It is city, that we would use for our city bonds for other things.
And right now, sorry, right now, your city debt percentage is substantially below 25%, so yes, there is a significant gap between your current debt service percentage and that 25% that could be used for other city needs.
So what, I would be interested to know the projections for how much we would expect over 20 years to be created by that, so that we could think about redeveloping the North Gate Library.
Okay, we, we actually have those figures, so we could, we could pull that together.
Because that, you know, that's something we've allocated money for site search, right? 50 grand, I think, for site search. And I think there's been discussion about, could a library live within this footprint in some way? What might, what, what's the cash flow available for something like that within this TIF district? Because TIF increment is typically spent in the TIF district, like that's what it's for, right? Okay, the other piece, just to do a little housekeeping related to the questions Councilman, Councilwoman Dotley was asking, the cost is 8.7 million that we would reimburse plus interest?
Correct.
So the actual cost looks like listed here is expected to be 14.6 million dollars.
Correct.
Not 8.7 million dollars.
No, 8.7 is a project, and the other is the interest.
And we would be committing, the way this is currently going to be proposed to us for a vote, to actually pay up to 14.6 million dollars toward this increment, toward this investment.
That is correct. Keeping in mind, if it's paid off early, you're not going to, the city would not hit that 14 million dollar piece.
Right, okay. So those items aside, and the clarity, and I appreciate that for my own decision-making, you know, the thing that's, that's sticking with me, counsel and, and Councilman Davis, is, this is the first TIF that's come across my desk that is infrastructure-only. And the difference that I see is that when we are looking at the, the proposal for a TIF project that's above ground, we set expectations within that economic development package for a certain type of development, right? And if that's going to change, like it did recently with the other TIF that's in, was in three and two, and now is only in two, you know, they have to come back to us to say, well, we said we were going to build XYZ, but now we want to build something different. And the planned Chattanooga draft in 2024 for Hickson, and Sharita has mentioned this a couple times, is that the goal stated by the community is they'd like to see, facilitate redevelopment of North Gate Mall and surrounding commercial areas into a compact, walkable town center. And so I can't come to your meeting tomorrow, because I have a District 2 meeting in the morning, but I will be there on Sunday. But Councilman Davis, I would like to understand, what does walkable town center look like for the people of Hickson? What is their vision? Because what I don't want is for us to move forward with an infrastructure deal and then be disappointed with what comes out of the ground. And to that end, you know, you may, I thought it was beautiful what you said about how North Gate Mall was for many, many years, a point of community pride. What would come out of the ground here that would be a point of community pride, that would cause people from other districts to drive into Hickson, to have people from municipalities like Saudi Daisies drive into Hickson to go to this area, in the way that we have Cambridge Square in District 6 that is a destination, right? Maybe that's what Hickson wants, maybe it's not, maybe Hickson's like, please don't come, I don't know. But if you could, if you could shed a little light on that, and then Rakita, not Rakita, I'm so sorry, y'all, I'm, I've had, I've taken double migraine meds today, so I'm not thinking quite straight. So then, Sharita, if you could talk to us, and maybe Mark, about what kind of accountability mechanisms we have at our disposal to speak to the vision of the people of Hickson about what they want to see here. So first, can you share with us what you're hearing from?
Can I, before we go into that, I, I would like to clarify this, and I want to flashback a little bit to some CBL said, that I can think it helped set the tone for your question. I think if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, if they're not able to get this increment or this infrastructure project, there may not be much opportunity for development.
I don't dispute that, yeah.
And so, one second, please. So I, I respect, and I'm looking forward to hearing Councilman Davis's response, but I also want to preference that, you know, for me, anyway, this is my perspective, trying to look and see how do we put the, the main thing, the main thing. And so I just want to put that out there, that, you know, that's something that the developer did set up on the front end. But Councilman, Councilman Henderson, are you all right if I hop around?
Yeah.
Okay. Nope, you're good, I'm about to do this right here.
Okay. Would you like?
Go ahead, Councilman Davis.
Yeah, so thank you for that, and for the opportunity to kind of address it. So, yeah, a development similar to Cambridge Square is something that several folks have come to me and said, that's, that's what they'd like to see there. Certainly, nobody wants it to be all residential, particularly all, you know, multifamily housing. That certainly wouldn't meet that goal of, of having a walkable town center. But I think some of that, in combination with new retail, entertainment, some park space, I think, is something that, that folks would very much value, some, some sort of green space in that area. The idea of having the library moved from where it currently is on the perimeter, or outside the, the Ring Road, I guess you'd call it, into that space is a great idea, and something I've spoken with CBL and, and Will at the library and others about, and that would be phenomenal, I think. And, and that would be something that would be more like that, that town center that folks are, are looking to have. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, so, so Sharita, Councilman Davis said, you know, Hickson would be looking for a development similar to Cambridge Square, not all multifamily housing, they would be expecting, dreaming of, a vision of, new retail, new entertainment, park space, green space, library. What accountability mechanisms, if any, do we have within, because this is, this is all Zone CC, which is wide open, you can do just about anything with it. Talk to us about accountability mechanisms that we could potentially build into this to help District 3 achieve their vision.
This would be very similar to the previous TIF that came back to this council for an amendment. What was listed in their agreement, they were not able to meet, so they asked for an amendment. When we get to the development and financing, the development plan that happens at the IDB, that's, that's where that is set.
So the documents that we have would not have language related to new retail, entertainment, park space, green space, library, that would come at the IDB?
That could be included in the economic, the economic impact plan as well.
We could include it in the economic impact plan, okay. And so if.
My attorney's saying no.
As we're infrastructure, okay, yeah, let's.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, but I was worried with the thing. The economic impact plan is not a contract, so we can put all kinds of stuff in it, but it doesn't bind the developer and the lease, it's just a, it's what authorizes the increment. This is going to be a very interesting development agreement, because of the issues you're asking, or exactly where it's going to be challenging, is this is a five-to-10-year build-out of this mall into something else. This, and I've worked on all the other malls that you saw, I've seen some of them have their plan totally ready to go. They don't have that yet, but they know what the dream is. And getting them to say, this is our dream, working with Hickson to try to achieve it, and they'll certainly have some negative uses. I mean, if, if this is not approved, they really have the real incentive just to flip the remainder of the mall and just say, look, it's just not worth this. And so you could end up with storage facilities and things like that, it's just not going to be good for Hickson. But they're not ready to commit that we'll move the library, things like that. We're going to have to try to reach a common
going to have to try to reach a common ground, like this is our aspiration. This is, it gives the city a seat at the table on what this, the redevelopment will look like. And otherwise, they, again, CBL's been a great partner on this. I mean, we butted heads pretty hard from time to time, but you're very lucky that you have a really national quality developer who's willing to try to make something here, I think. And so, but the development agreement will be where the accountability is, but will it be thou shalt build this, thou shalt build that? I mean, I don't think we have a plan, or they don't have a plan yet, I don't think the city does, like, okay, we want Greenways here, we want the library to go here. It's going to have to be something wider than that that will be revisited constantly, and we got to develop that mechanism for revisiting it for, and constant reporting.
So Mark, the development agreement will come out of which body?
IDB.
The development agreement will come out of the IDB.
Yes.
And the development agreement is a binding document that ties to this TIF agreement.
Yes.
So frankly, I find what I have heard about the vision of the people of Hickson for this property to be much more exciting, livable, enjoyable than the vision that I have thus far seen from the applicant for this site. I find the applicant's vision for this site to be very practical. And we have to balance those two things, I think, when we're making a 14.6 million dollar investment in public dollars for something. So this, right now, this land is Zone CC. So once the, without language counsel in this development agreement, once this property is rehabbed underground with these utilities, it can become feasibly a blank slate that could be any number of things in CC. And if you've got your uses in CC and would require no rezoning and no conversation, you said, you know, start a conversation with the people of Hickson. No, not the way legally it is written right now, because they can do just about anything by right. And that's fine with me, if that's fine with the people of Hickson. But I get an impression that the people of Hickson have a vision and want to maintain some level of ownership over the way the culture of their community continues to evolve. And so help me understand, Mark, what latitude we have within the development agreement for the type of conditions that we might typically put on a PUD or on a rezoning, or on a pilot with a community benefits agreement where you are required to have conversation with the community. Tell me about that.
Definitely think we could include conversations with the community. The process of developing the vision is something that could definitely be included. Now, I have not talked to the CBL folks about it. They may say, Mark, you're crazy, we're not going to agree to that. But I mean, that would certainly be part of it. We have talked about negative uses.
Speak to their vision of working with the community.
Yes, yeah.
Wouldn't that?
My sense from talking to them is that they would be glad to do that. My, we've already talked about negative uses. If you put this amount of public investment in there, as you just pointed out, the zoning is very broad. There are certain things. But without upgraded sewer and water system and stormwater system, there's just not adequate capacity to do things that require significant amounts of water and things like that more, you know. And so it would, the kind of uses that would likely end up there without this, you know. But they are, do we have a definite list yet? No. But they're open to realizing that if there's this big public investment, they can't then turn around and, no disrespect for storage, but it's just a good example, that it uses no utilities to speak of. And so, I mean, you could have the biggest storage center complex in Hamilton County sitting out there in the, where Northgate Mall is.
You absolutely could. And I think, you know, there's negative uses that we say, these are the things that are not allowed.
And I think there are...
But I think what I'm hearing about the people of Hickson is they, there are positive things. They would like to talk about the vision, the what we would like, in the same time that there's the what we don't want, right? But working together on what we hope for is, I think, a really important community conversation to have, and have mechanisms to be able to protect them for that in this agreement.
I totally agree. And I'm kind of excited to try to draft something that can accomplish what you're talking about. Their practicalities, but the need to, if we're putting this big public investment, how do we, how do you facilitate the community having a seat at the table in exchange?
And so the development agreement, because it lives at the IDB, that then, those conditions then become the work of the IDB to get that document?
We certainly can make the city a third-party beneficiary if, to the document, but typically it would just be the, the IDB would have the enforcement rights to, you know, be a default if they don't do it.
But the development agreement goes across their desk, not across our desk.
Right. I mean, it's a public document, though, that you would have access to comment on and things like that, but they're the ones that are a party to it.
All right, thank you. That's all I need, Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Council, we have two more folks. Councilman Henderson, can you hit your light? And then I have, hold on, give me one second.
Don't go anywhere.
You first, then Councilman Harvey.
I had to tell my TIF attorney, don't go anywhere.
Can you hit your light for me?
Let's, Councilman Harvey.
Okay, Councilman Harvey, I'm gonna put us on a three-minute time limit.
Yeah, I'm gonna be quick.
Okay.
I agree with what Chairwoman Hill has been saying. You know, I'd love to support this, because I'd love to see Northgate, you know, what it once was. So let me, let me start by saying that. But if the city of Chattanooga is going to potentially invest 14.6 million dollars, I want to make sure that we're not going to get four multifamily buildings and a strip club. I mean, I'm just, you know, no offense to any strip club owners in the building. But, so I don't, I would like some more clarification on if there is some sort of limitations that we can put on this to ensure that it is something that meets the standards of not only the citizens of Hickson, but the city of Chattanooga. So I do want some more clarification on that, please. Thank you.
You good, Councilman?
I'm good.
And I'll say this, and then Councilman Henderson, I'm gonna go to you. Council, I will say this, you know, while this project involves taxpayer dollars that we all need to be comfortable with in order to allow our vote, I think that, in my opinion, this is just me, the talks about what does a community look like to develop, that's a different conversation. I tell my folks in my district all the time, development's not always something to be scared of, as long as it makes sense to your community. And this community is represented by a councilperson. And I think we have to heed his direction as to where he's trying to take his district, as far as what that looks like. And I know, at least for me, I will follow your lead, because they represent, they voted you in, just like I would ask others to allow our district, District Nine to be developed accordingly. Councilman Henderson, and then we're going to move on.
To some of your newer council members, it's been my experience on this council that if it's not in writing, it doesn't happen. So that's just my two cents there.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And speaking of things in writing, I think I had mentioned before about being in the development agreement that CBL would maintain ownership throughout the build-out of the infrastructure. I know there's a transfer clause in there.
Sure.
I would like to see them see out the build-out of the infrastructure. What's the difference in revenue that we would receive between the 2024 base and a 2025 base?
The difference is roughly $89,000.
We would receive another $89,000 a year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Mr. Attorney?
Yes. Sharita, in my spare time, I also represent the Industrial Development Board as well as the City of Chattanooga. And I thought I was promised a while back, Mark, a document at least y'all were going to send us about sales taxing. And we haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
Betsy said she was going to send it to me, but I have not seen it.
I'm embarrassed, not embarrassed, I, it's in your email. You have it. It just came a couple, three hours before this meeting, just so that I sent you the draft of the sales tax agreement and our memo analyzing why it's legal. So you have it, but I knew it was a busy day, and I apologized in my email. So I now can apologize to you in person.
That's wonderful. I'm glad to have it today.
That is true.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, Tom O'Reilly.
Justin.
All right, Sharita, Mark, thank you both for taking the time to connect with us. Moving on for the second time, last little bit for this committee, we have two resolutions that are going to be on our agenda today. I pushed up both of them, involving our stopgaps to try to help families that have been affected from the federal shut-offs and typically SNAP benefits. Council, I plan on making amendments to these resolutions tonight, starting the, with the one that related to shut-offs, water shut-offs, and related to unpaid sewer bills. I'll be removing the following, and I'll quote, either A, federal funding for SNAP benefits resumes, or B, any federal government shutdown ends, whichever comes first. I'll be removing those and replacing it with January 15th. So I'll be looking to hold off our disconnects until January 15th. The thought behind this, just because federal government funding is back on, does not negate the hardships people have been put in, right? You know, too many families have found themselves having to rob Peter to pay Paul over these last 45, however many days, while folks in Washington play politics with people's lives. And with the holidays coming up and people trying to get back on their feet, that does not happen often. And if you have ever been in a position where you've been broke and have to live paycheck to paycheck, you know, once you get a little influx of cash, life doesn't become normal immediately. So I'm looking to put off disconnects until January 15th. And for our resolution that involves EPB doing all they can to help our residents at this time, I'm asking to remove the following, and I quote, the SNAP suspension, and I'm looking to replace it with the following, the federal government reopening in the transitions to come, in the coming weeks to follow. I'll make sure the city attorney has that, but I'll be announcing those amendments from the floor for your consideration. Anybody else? All hearts and minds clear? Any unbridedness? All right, Madam Chair, when are we looking to retire?
So 45 minutes, so that would be 6:30?
We're recessed at 6:30. Thank you. Well, recess is six thirty. Thank you.
All right, we've done the minutes. We've done the attorney call.
Go ahead and make the announcement.
Okay, we are back in session. Before we move into our voting, I do want to remind everyone that we will be off next week for Thanksgiving, and we will be returning on the second of December. Madam Clerk, will you please -- we have no ordinances on final reading. Will you please read item 8A?
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code, Chapter 11, Article 7, junk and secondhand dealers, Section 11 to 16, definitions.
Thank you, counsel. Can I get a motion? Thank you, counsel. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of the unopened right-of-way in the 7400 block of Sonia Lane is detailed on the attached maps subject to certain conditions.
Would you approve?
Second.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Hit your light if you've got any questions or comments. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unused rail right-of-way of a former narrow-gauge railroad road operated as part of the city's railway system in the 200 block of North Fort Janobes detailed on the attached maps.
Okay. Yeah, I'm ready. Counselwoman, Vice Chairwoman Knoll.
Thank you. Just want to make note that this says railway system, okay? So I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of an unopened alley in the 2200 block of East 19th Street as detailed on the attached maps subject to certain conditions.
Vote to approve. Second.
All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Hit your light if you've got any questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone property located at 2802 Curtis Street from RN 1-5 residential neighborhood zone to TRN 2 zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? Vice Chairwoman Knoll, this is in your district. How would you like to proceed?
I want to make a motion to defer until December the second.
Second. All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to defer until December 2nd. Hit your light if you've got any questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone property located at 2003 Gold Coast Boulevard from RN 1-5 residential neighborhood zone to TRN 3 traditional neighborhood residential zone subject to certain conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? Vice Chairwoman Knoll, I see an applicant, but I do not --
That's an opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Thank you. Good to know. Okay, so we will give the applicant seven minutes to discuss the project, and then we will allow the opposition nine minutes to share their feelings, and then you will have a two-minute rebuttal time, sir, if you'd like to come up.
My name is DJ. I work for the developers, and we're trying to get this rezoned to residential condos. And prior to this, we were trying to get Metta Valor, which is like a rehab-type, what do you call it, place there, but I think the council was -- was opposed to that, and then that didn't go through because they didn't get funding for it, because they had to get funding for that. Now we're trying to build condos there, because we are trying to save the building instead of getting it demolished. So, I mean, it would help us if we can get it rezoned, so that we can move along with the process of trying to build condos there.
Okay, thank you, do you have anything else to say right now?
No.
Okay, all right, those of you who are here in opposition to this project, you can come up, and it looks like we maybe only have one person, which means you will get a full nine minutes, ma'am. You don't have to use the full nine minutes, but you may. So we've got nine minutes on the clock, and then after you speak, we will give the applicant two minutes rebuttal time, so each person, each group would have nine minutes total. Please state your name and your district for the record.
I, my name is Marissa Schrum, and I'm in District 6, but I'm here to talk about District 8.
Okay.
Am I available?
Yeah, you're allowed to speak, we just have to have it for our records.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Marissa Schrum. My family has been a part of this city's growth in a myriad of ways, my mother, her name is Dorothy Lee Grisham, she's served the community, protecting homes and community assets for almost 50 years. My grandfather owned a shop on Fraser Avenue in the 50s, my father helped open Eastgate Mall and Hamilton Place Mall with the Sears and Roebuck Company. My uncle is a rural builder around Rising Fawn in Trenton. I feel like I'm a child of Chattanooga, my very first job at 18-years-old was with Moses Freeman in the Department of Neighborhood Services, he was my very first employer and my very first mentor. May he rest in power. In the summer of 2000, it was my job to drive around Chattanooga, around this beautiful city, in a car with no air conditioning, and a big old piece of paper, checking out, learning zoning codes, checking appropriate land use, and learning the difference between development for a community and development that simply happens to a community. 25 years later, after Fight the Blight, I don't know if y'all remember that, I'm standing here because I'm both excited and cautious about the effects of the rezoning request for the former Avondale Baptist Cathedral appraised property, I want to be clear, I'm not against development, I'm here with the hopes that development is done with the community, not around it. I have some questions. Does the zoning change come with any plan or commitment for affordable, attainable, or mixed-income housing? Confused about the demolishment, there was a notice about it being demolished. The brutalist architecture is maybe not everybody's favorite, it's essentially was a project of the, from the 60s to 80s, the American government actually funded that kind of architecture, to reflect an intention towards heritage, towards, they wanted these projects to be built to last, and I think that Avondale Baptist, at least parts of it, I'm not saying the whole, like, to demolish, to not demolish, I'm questioning if we can preserve parts of that brutalist architecture, because it really was, it was an investment in things that were built to last, and once we lose design like this in Chattanooga, we can't get it back, and so I'm just hoping that maybe instead of saying yes or no, we maybe slow down and consider parts that could be saved, or parts that do need to maybe go with the times, and give it an upgrade for the community, to reflect a future-forward vision of the aesthetic of Avondale. Question three, has the city assessed how the TRN 3 designation could impact property taxes for long-time residents, especially elders on fixed incomes? Currently, the plan talks about studios, one beds, two beds, I think for a family of four, even though we're talking about density, if we want people from the community to be able to live there, I'd love to see three bedrooms as a commitment for this to be rezoned, because if we want density, I think working families should at least have access to this property in this space. When I think about studios, that's a really tight space, and I say this with a lot of admiration for the development community, but I think, you know, as a Chattanoogaan, I think it's important to guard against template aesthetics, whether it's Brooklyn, San Diego, these tight cramped spaces, can we actually have an aesthetic that reflects, or commitment to an aesthetic and design that really reflects the needs of real working families, a family of four in a two-bedroom, just does not sound like feasible, comfortable, or reflective of the culture of the city. Number five, actually, yes, this is to that point, is there a design-scale square footage and style that reflects our local culture, any retail space, or an explore of food-focused services for the community? Before any build moves forward, could we have a transparent community process where residents help shape the vision, the design direction, or even the cultural identity of this development? And could this process include community input on naming, placemaking, and the broader story of how we are turning the Cathedral of Praise into something gorgeous for everyone who lives there, new, old, and for the future? I think Avondale can grow through investment, but I think that investment should reflect true partnership, and I just might be a little early, but as we're thinking about the rezoning request, I'm just wondering if there are commitments that can be made that really protect the residents, and allow for inclusion and access, at least attainable housing, for some of the people that live in that community to partake in this development. Thank you for your time and consideration, I appreciate you all deeply.
Thank you.
This has been a beautiful First City Council meeting as well, thank you.
A long one, thanks for being here. Sir, you've got two minutes.
So, this is just the initial, you know, pieces of trying to get this to a different direction than what it is right now. So, I mean, you know, we're not finalized on it being one bedrooms and two bedrooms, they can be two or three bedrooms, but again, it also depends on, you know, what we can do with the building, so it's just a starting process, rezoning would be the first thing, and then after that, we can, you know, change our plans on what exactly goes in there. We did think about mixed use at one point, but to keep it simple, this is what we did for the rezoning purposes. And I think in your last meeting, you said that nobody reached out to you previously?
They did not.
Yeah, I sent you an email in July, a long, like, detailed email, I never got a response from that, and then also, I believe Kent Smith tried to contact you, or put you in contact with Sam Jasser, who's the other partner in the development, and we were not able to get a meeting together. So, I mean, we would really like to get a meeting with you, so that you can ask questions and, you know, see how we can preserve this, the structure as much as possible, again, like you said, we're not going to be able to save everything, but we do want to keep most of the building, so, and redevelop it to make that area a nicer place for the residents, for the community. Because we do want it to, like, grow, because Sam, who's the other developer, or the partner in the development, he does have other businesses in the area, and he's been in that, you know, location since 2001, I believe. So, you know, we're not trying to just demolish it and make it a flat parking lot.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Vice Chair, this is in your district, would you like a presentation?
No, I don't, I don't need a presentation.
Okay.
And I would like for you to resend that email that you sent me in July.
Okay.
Because there's not an email that I receive that I do not answer, nor a phone call, nor a text. No, no phone call, no text, and I have met with Sam a couple of times, and Sam has yet to follow through with what he was supposed to do. So, that's the issue. Now, contacting me before this came back from the courts, I have not received any, any correspondence in reference from Sam or anyone else. So that's my issue with rezoning this property, is because there is never a follow-through of what is supposed to be done, when is it supposed to be done. So I'm going to defer this for two weeks, until December the 2nd, until we can have a conversation, and I need to see some concrete plans in, in place, and I do need for you all to meet with the Neighborhood Association, because that has not been done, period. Okay? So I make a motion to defer until December the 2nd.
Okay, and I see you, Councilman Elliott, once we get the motion on the floor, then I'll hit your light. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with a proper second. If you have any questions or comments, please hit your light, Councilman Elliott.
This is in the Avondale neighborhood, and sits in Councilwoman Noel's district, but I share a slither of Avondale, and, but I'm following her lead on whatever she says, so, whether she ain't happy, and the neighborhood ain't happy, y'all won't be either. But I will say this, and I want to clarify this, because I was in the meetings where it was floated that you were guys, you guys are looking to bring halfway houses, into that property, is that still your plan?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Because they moved on, they couldn't get funding.
Okay.
That was initial plan, because, you know, the city wanted it demolished.
Come on to the microphone.
Sorry. So the city wanted it demolished, but we wanted to keep it, so we were working with Southern Spear, and they brought Metta Valor, because they have a reputable foundation based out of Nashville, and even Kent Smith from the community, he went there and visited it, and he was happy with what they did, came back, but apparently the councilwoman didn't like it, and they didn't, she didn't want, you know.
Well, I want to clarify, the neighborhood didn't like it.
Yeah.
It, it just wasn't her, I've been in those meetings, the neighborhood didn't like it. So it's not just her, so let's, let's make that clear. I also want to say this, because this has been going on for some time, did I hear you properly that you said the plans for this site is still up in the air, subject to change?
No, I mean, if, if we want to do a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, we can still do that, I'm talking about those, those minor changes, but we are still trying to build condos there, condominiums for sale.
Councilwoman, this is, Vice, Madam Vice Chair, this is to you, you know, this is something that a, a previous member of this council did often, Councilman Kent Smith, he would sometimes plug in the site plans into the rezoning, to make sure that the community had a peace of mind, knowing that they were going to get what was promised. That may be something we may want to consider for this site, as long as the slough of conditions.
Yeah, it, I'll let you recognize.
You guys, counsel.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Chairwoman.
Thank you, so, Metta Valor.
Yes.
Replicable, you say, company or?
Institution.
Entity, institution, but the track record is that they only put these into low-income neighborhoods. So that would be of no benefit to District 8 in any shape, form, or fashion. And I would never, ever agree to anything like that. Now, I offered Sam an opportunity to bring in housing, affordable housing for that area, and he said he did not have the funding in order to get that done. Now, I asked him, my question was, because I want all this on the record and make it perfectly clear, my question was, why did you buy the property? And you know what his answer was to me, and this was at a meeting, he said he bought it because he didn't want a family to purchase it, because he had a business on the corner, and if they had purchased that property, they would have put in a service station and a store, and it would have put his business out of business, and I told him that was not a good answer. And he also said to me that the area was not a good area to develop, that it was high crime. I said, well, it's still high crime as far as you concerned.
Yeah.
But I will never, unless you all can show me that this is going to go forward in a positive light, then I will not. So I will, like I said, make the deferment until December the 2nd, and have another meeting, and now, I mean, I've never seen you before, nor had a conversation with you before.
I'm the closest one to you, so.
Okay, it's, it's been Sam.
Yeah.
The one, and another gentleman, Mr. Morland, and I think Kent Smith was the ones that I had the actual one-on-one meeting with, and then Sam has never, to my knowledge, been to Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting at all. It was always Kent Smith, which is president of.
Yeah.
That brought forth whatever the decision was, but you know.
Yeah, Sam lives in Detroit now, so.
Okay, so, tell Sam he gonna need to come here, if he wants to do what needs to be done.
Can I ask you if your email is correct?
Please do.
mnoelle@chattanooga.gov.
That's it.
Okay, that's the email that I sent it to, and I'll forward it.
Okay, I, I would like to see a copy of it.
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Good.
I am good, yes, thank you.
All right, counsel, it looks like we don't have any other questions or comments, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second to defer item F until the 2nd of December. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to lift condition number one from ordinance number 13576, the previous case number 2019 0133, on property located at 1305 Anderson Avenue, tax map number 146JD012 only, subject to the following condition, shall remain.
Thank you, do we have an applicant present? For this, no? Do we have any opposition present? All right, Councilman Elliott, this is in your district, we have no applicant or opposition present, would you like a presentation?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm gonna say this, I said before I got to me. Highland Park has been dealing with this property for years, long before I got in office, and they have been promised the sun and everything in between, as to what this is going to look like, and you know, my thing with this, I understand things change, but as I try to be a person of my word, I expect people to do the same, especially to our community, so I don't know this individual, and Karen and her staff have reached out to them, and I have asked him to reach out as well, and I am going to, I want to defer this until December 16th, and if we don't have contact by that time, I will be looking to deny, and I also want this property owner to understand and be prepared that this is also a eyesore. So as we work to improve cleaning up our community in our city, I don't know what's going to happen to this property, but it can't just keep sitting the way it is, and so, you do with that as you wish, whoever you may be, and I hope to hear from you soon, but I would like to move to defer this until December 16th, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to defer this item until December 16th with a proper second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item H, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, the Chattanooga zoning ordinance as adopted by ordinance number 14137 on July 23, 2024, to add clarity zoning map interpretations for right-of-way abandonments, and add as a permitted use one unit attached or detached dwelling in the CN and CNT zones.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item I, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, the Chattanooga zoning ordinance as adopted by ordinance number 14137 on July 23, 2024, more specifically, Article 2, definitions, Article 8, special purpose zones, Section 38, 38, FW floodways, Section 38, 39, FH flood hazard, and Article 18, non-conformities, Section 38, 98, non-conforming structure.
Thank you, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to resolutions, item A, please.
Resolution directing the city of Chattanooga to suspend water shut-offs relating to the unpaid sewer fees until either A, federal funding for SNAP benefits resumes, or B, any federal government shutdown ends, whichever comes first.
Councilman Elliott.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve this with amendments to follow.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second.
And, Madam Chair, I would like to make the following amendments to this one, I would like to strike the following, and I quote, either A, federal funding for SNAP benefits resumes, or B, any federal government. benefits resumes, or B, any federal government shutdown ends, whichever comes first, end quote. And I would like to place, replace that with January fifteenth. Uh, remember, council, this is, uh, gonna, uh, push our shut-offs until January fifteenth, giving families some time to adjust and considering the holidays.
Could we make that January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, please. That's all. Okay, great. Okay, um, do we have a second on that motion? Okay, council, we have a motion to amend on the floor with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments about the motion to amend? All right, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to amend pass, passes. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
All right, council, we have a motion on the floor to approve as amended with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor to approve as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve as amended passes. Thank you, council. Item B.
A resolution urging the Electoral Power Board, E P B, to take all steps possible to safeguard Chattanooga customers during the SNAP suspension, including but not limited to temporary pauses on disconnections for non-payment, expanded payment plans, flexible fee, late fee policies, and proactive outreach to Ed Reach households.
Councilman Elliott.
Uh, I'd like to move to approve with amendments to follow. Um, the First Amendment, Madam Chair, uh, excuse me, this amendment, I would like to remove the following, and I'll quote the SNAP suspension, and I would like to place it with the following language, and I quote, "The federal government reopening, uh, in transitions the coming, uh, and the coming following weeks."
Um, so that's a change to the caption. Do you have any amendments to the actual language of the resolution?
Yeah, that was to the actual resolution, Madam Chair.
Okay, so.
When I looked at it, uh, clicked the link, it is, uh, uh.
So whereas when the federal government pauses a lifeline like SNAP?
It's in the, um, bottom portion in Tennessee.
Okay, so you want to keep all of the top language about the government closure?
Yeah, because this is actually the actual meat and potatoes of the resolution.
Okay, so Phil, do you, do you have that? So.
Remove the SNAP suspension language and replace with what?
He's talking, I'm sorry, I can't hear. What did I say?
Replace, the replacement language on here, remove the SNAP suspension language. We got that.
Oh, yes, sorry. Let me pull this back up. Replace it, the federal government, uh, reopening transition and the coming weeks to follow.
Okay, got it.
You got it? Okay. Okay, so council, we have a motion to amend.
Aye.
We have a motion on the floor to amend with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments about the amendment? Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, councilman, I guess the only thing, I mean, to me, it's a little vague and open-ended as when, when we say in the coming weeks, as opposed.
Explanation for this.
Okay, um, hit, hit your light.
Oh, sorry. E P B is, uh, has items in place all ready to help people with hardships, but they're also looking at, uh, programs they're looking to announce in their future that could also help people in addition to some of the programs they have in place. And so, you know, as I said before, E P B's always been partners when we needed them the most, and this is just urging them to continue that work as people are transitioning out of this, this slump. And, you know, like I said earlier, folks are not going to be ma- made whole instantly. So asking them to do all they can in these next coming weeks to make sure that people can find some solid footing.
Well, I mean, really, I mean, this, you know, really, I mean, I'm, I'm.
No.
Urging them.
And we, and we ha- and that's the point, because while E P B is an agency of ours, the only authority we have over, over them are bonds and their governing board, right? We can't tell them what to do with their operations.
I would say, I guess I would just do a, but I think I get your point.
Okay. Yes, I have. I've talked to their leadership team. Yep.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions? All right. Have to find my file again here. Just a second, I was looking at the, okay. Council, we have a motion on the floor to amend with a proper second. All in favor of approving as amended?
Aye.
Or approving the amendment, excuse me. Okay, now, that amendment passes. Now, I need a motion on the floor to approve as amended, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, council, any other conversation? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve as amended with a proper second. Do we have any other conversation? Looks like none. All in favor to approve as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, please.
This would be item, is this?
I'm sorry, item C.
A resolution authorizing city Chattanooga to contribute two hundred thousand dollars to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank to provide critical support and nutritional assistance to residents during the suspension of supplemental nutrition assistance program SNAP funds.
Thank you, council. Do we have any questions or comments?
I, I have one for the attorney, and this did not occur to me earlier. Um, this language reads assistance to residents during the suspension of supplemental assistance program funds.
Yes.
Might, might.
Could say following.
Okay, following the suspension?
Yes.
Okay, so council, if we could get a, a motion to amend to change the word during to following, and let's look at the text within the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so the, thank you. So, um, council, we have a motion on the floor to amend, um, by switching the word during to following. And let's just give our attorney a second to look at the language in the resolution, see if we need to make any other changes.
Okay, I believe the language is okay because it says that the city authorizes a financial contribution of two hundred thousand to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank to assist in providing food and essential nutritional support to residents affected by the temporary suspension of SNAP funds. I believe that language is okay.
Okay.
Just a caption.
Great, great, great. Okay, so council, we have a motion on the floor to amend with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, can I get, uh, that motion to amend passes. Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, council, we have a motion on the floor to approve as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Whew, three amendments in a row. Crushing it, crushing it, crushing it. Okay, uh, item D, please.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Bob Guyer for the Board of Zoning Appeals for District One for a term beginning on November nineteen, twenty-twenty-five and ending on November eighteen, twenty-twenty-eight.
Councilman Henderson.
Move approval.
All right, council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Madam Clerk, I would like to take resolutions E, F, and G as a package, please.
Item B, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic Development to enter into an agreement with River City Company for a storefront improvement and retail recruitment initiative in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Item F, a resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Economic Development to accept emergency solutions grant E S G funds from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, T H D A, to be used for homelessness, outreach, and prevention activities for an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Item G, a resolution authorizing mayor's destiny to submit such brownfield voluntary agreement application to the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, T D E C, in substantially the form of cash, and approved to enter into such brownfield voluntary agreement, V E A, and notice of land use restrictions as it relates to the property located at Finley Stadium Park Campus sixteen-twenty, sixteen-fifty-six, seventeen-eighty-five, eighteen-on-one, eighteen-twenty-six, eighteen-thirty-five, and nineteen-on-five Ridge Way Boulevard, tax map numbers one-four-five K F zero-zero-one, one-four-five K F zero-zero-one-point-zero-one, one-four-five K E zero-zero-one-point-zero-one, one-four-five K E zero-zero-one, one-four-five K E zero-zero-two, one-four-five K E zero-zero-four, one-four-five K B zero-zero-six, and five-hundred West Main Street, tax map number one-four-five K F zero-zero-three, and five-nineteen West Nineteenth Street, tax map number one-four-five K C zero-zero-seven.
Who has the best clerk? We have the best clerk. All right, council, can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you, council. We have a motion on the floor to approve items E, F, and G as a package with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's take items H and I together as a package, please.
Item H, initial resolution authorized the issuance of a, um, issuance of not to exceed forty million, three hundred thousand general obligation bonds of the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee. Item I, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred million, three hundred thousand dollars in one or more series, making provision for the issuing, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of principal premium, if any, and interest on the bonds.
Thank you. And for the record, in case I heard it wrong, that is forty million, three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay, council, can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's take items J and K together, please, as a package, unless we want to give Karen a separate special. Okay, separate special. Yeah, okay, item J, please.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Greg Wisniewski as risk officer of the Risk Department.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Greg, you want to stand up and wait?
Right over there to the right.
All right. Item K, please.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Karen Rennick as executive director of the Regional Planning Agency.
Move to approve.
Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a couple proper seconds. I'll let Nicole pick who got that officially. Um, do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Here's hoping you're still smiling next. All right, Parks and Outdoors, item L, please.
A resolution authorizing the waiver of park rental fees in the amount of three thousand dollars for River City Company in Chattanooga presents in support of reindeer on the riverfront for the dates of November twenty-eighth, twenty-nine, and thirty, twenty-twenty-five, to be held in Ross's Landing Renaissance Park in Chattanooga Green with refundable, refundable deposit in the amount of three thousand dollars, responsibility of the applicant for a total amount of six thousand dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items M, N, O, and P, please, Madam Clerk.
Item M, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Tristan McCroskey as a special police officer unarmed for the city of Chattanooga Department of Public Works, L D O Co's Division, to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of duties in his position as co-enforcement inspector one. Item N, a resolution authorizing the twenty-twenty-five annual inflation adjustment of the financial assurance for the city of Chattanooga landfill permit numbers S N L three-three-zero-zero-zero-zero. How many zeros is that?
Zero, 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 zero. You got them all. Zero, 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 zero.
Okay, that's S N L three-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-seven-three, original at Birch, Birchwood landfill as required by the regulations of the Division of Solid Waste Management for a decrease, decrease of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents for a revised total amount of one million, four hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Item O, a resolution authorizing the twenty-twenty-five annual inflation adjustment of the financial assurance for the city of Chattanooga landfill permit numbers S N L three-three-zero-zero-zero-two-seven-three, lateral expansion area three at Birchwood landfill as required by the regulations of the Division of Solid Waste Management for an increase of two hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents for a revised amount of nine million, six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Item P, a resolution authorizing the twenty-twenty-five annual inflation adjustment of the financial assurance for the city of Chattanooga landfill permit numbers S N L three-three-zero-zero-zero-zero, looks like another zero.
Zero.
Three-five, phases one and two at Summit landfill as required by the regulations of the Division of Solid Waste Management for an increase of thirty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents for a revised amount not to exceed one million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Thank you very much. Council, can I get a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve these public works items with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have two police items, items Q and R. Let's take those as a package, please, Madam Clerk.
Item Q, a resolution authorized chief of police or his destiny along with the Department of Community Safety and Gun Violence Prevention to apply for and if awarded, accept the downtown public safety grant through the state of Tennessee to be used to enhance safety, reduce crime, and strengthen public confidence within the city's downtown core for a three-year grant period beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-eight for an amount not to exceed two million, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. Item R, a resolution authorizing chief of police to apply for and if rewarded, accept the violent crime intervention fund grant through the state of Tennessee to be used to implement programming based upon proven effective violent crime intervention models by creating evidence-based programs and purchasing technology and infrastructure for a three-year grant period beginning on July one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending on June thirty, twenty-twenty-eight for an amount not to exceed two point nine million dollars.
Councilman Henderson.
Move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to purchases. Council, we have, I believe, seventeen purchases tonight. Um, if I, uh, can, I'd like to ask someone to make a motion on, um, that's what we're going to do. We're going to motion that one first.
Yeah, make that motion.
Yeah, um, the item for, um, security guard services that we discussed in agenda. If that is the pleasure of the council, I'd like to request that we, uh, go ahead and get a motion to defer that item.
For Collins Protective Services.
For Collins Protective Services.
Move.
Do we have a second? Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the floor to defer this item. Um, Debbie, will you please read that into the record?
Sure. It's item number fifteen. It's for purchasing.
And that's to defer until December second.
Okay. Uh, new blanket agreement for security guard services. This will be a four-year agreement not to exceed one million dollars annually. The award will be made to Collins Protective Services as the best bid.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to defer until twelve, twelve-two, December second, um, with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to defer this singular item for Collins Protective Services passes. All right, Debbie, get a glass of water.
Okay, you ready?
Take it away, friend. We're gonna, she's gonna read our other purchases.
Okay, have sixteen purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first one is for purchasing. It's a new blanket agreement for newspaper ad and online advertising. This will be a four-year agreement not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars annually. This so source purchase will be aborted to Chattanooga Times Free Press. Um, fleet Fleet is a four-year renewal. The Peterbilt store has requested a 6% increase for Peterbilt OEM truck parts in service due to the cost of manufacturing. The new estimated annual spend will be $397,500. Fleet has approved this increase. Technology Services. This is a two-year renewal. Technology Services has requested $10,900 increase to agreement PA 100728 for Arca GIS small business subscription. The new estimated annual spend will be in the amount of $296,490 annually. Fire is a new blanket agreement for grounds maintenance for fire stations in Alton Park Connector. This will be a four-year agreement not to exceed $55,000 annually. The award will go to Special Touch Lawn Service as the best bid. Technology Services. This is a three-month extension through January 31 of 2026 to include $250,000 increase to coincide with the state of Tennessee contract. The new estimated annual spend will be $1,763,200. Technology Services approved the extension and the increase. Purchasing. This is a three-year renewal for inner borough packaging is requesting a 10% increase due to the increased costs of materials and labor, and Central Polybag is requesting a 2.3% increase due to the increased cost of materials and manufacturing. The new estimated annual spend will be $68,000. Purchasing has approved this increase. Parks and Outdoors. Counsel approval is requested to transfer ownership of agreement PA 100067 for bulk mulch from Groundsapes Concepts to Big Woody's Tree Service. Fleet, four-year renewal. Truckers Lighthouse has requested an 8% increase due to the cost of parts and equipment. The new annual spend will be $452,000. Public Works has approved the increase. Fleet, three-year renewal. Ford of Dalton has requested 2% increase due to the manufacturing production cost. The new annual spend will be $5,100,000. Public Works has approved the increase. Public Works. This is a one-time purchase of Rock Salt for roadways. This purchase from Morton Salt will be in the amount of $70,105, utilizing the state contract. Public Works. New blanket agreement for front-end loaders and refuse pickup services. This will be a four-year agreement not to exceed $400,000 annually. The award will be made to CWS Chattanooga Holling as the best bid. Fleet. This is a one-time purchase of a bucket truck. This purchase from Time Manufacturing will be in the amount of $170,916, utilizing Sourcewell Contract. Fleet. This is a one-time purchase of a new Holland tractor and boom mower. This will be purchased from Chattanooga Tractor and Equipment in the amount of $178,400, utilizing the Sourcewell Contract. Wastewater. Wastewater is requesting an increase of $100,000 to agreement PA 100740 for replacement of safety valves. The new estimated annual spend will be $485,000 annually. Purchasing. New blanket agree. Oh, excuse me, I'm going to the next one. This is from Police. Police has requested an increase of $10,200 to agreement PA 100624 for janitorial services through December of 2025. The new estimated spend will be $100,200. Technology Services. This is a one-time purchase of Axon Fuses cloud-based crime center platform used by police department. This purchase from Axon Enterprise will be in the amount of $149,983.68, utilizing Sourcewell Contract.
Thank you very much. Does anybody want to go back over all those? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, with a proper second. Any questions or comments, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I have one so source to report. This is Early Learning Head Start. This is a so source purchase of Child Plus Learning subscription from Child Plus Software in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. We have reached the time in the meeting where we will do some committee reports. Also, if you have any legislation that you'd like to bring in front of the body or any other comments, now would be the time to do so. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no committee report, but I did submit an amendment to our carriage ordinance that I would like to have placed in legislative committee.
Okay. Vice Chairwoman Noel, you are chairwoman of the Legislative Committee. When would you like to set our next legislative committee meeting?
So who wants to put it in there, Councilman Henderson?
I do.
Not going to let it. No, I'm kidding.
It's about carriage horses.
Ken Smith never could find time to put the chicken ordinance in.
It's about working women, isn't it?
I know.
This is a working women carriage horse.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, give me a take.
All right.
Let's go for it.
Do you have, Madam Chair, did you forward the ordinance to?
I forwarded it to our.
Madam Vice Chair.
Our, yes, I have, and it will be in our packets next week from our clerk, which next week is actually going to be the second. So we do have a planning and zoning on the second on the ninth.
Ninth.
Do you want to do the ninth?
The ninth is fine.
Okay, sound good to you, Councilman?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll please make a note of that, that we will see the carriage horses. Will you bring them in for your presentation?
I can see if I can make that happen, if you'd like.
Whatever's going to help your cause. All right, Councilman Davis.
He report, but there is a statement from one of my District III constituents that he wanted to make during public comment, but he had to leave the meeting. So if I could read that. My name is Greg Taylor, and I want to express my support for the Northgate Tiff Project. As a longtime resident of Hickson, I serve as president of Valleybrook, Windbrook, and Tuscany Place Homeowners Association. This neighborhood with 278 homes and over 600 residents has been an integral part of the Hickson community for many years. I'm also the president of Friends of Hickson, a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to improving the Hickson community as a great place to live and work. This organization functions as the neighborhood association for Hickson. Additionally, I'm the president of Hickson Kiwanis Club, which has served the community for over 75 years. In these roles, I speak to many residents of Hickson, and many have expressed their support for this project. As everyone knows, Northgate Mall has long been the center of the Hickson community. The private utilities serving the mall and nearby businesses need upgrades to meet current public standards. The infrastructure urgently needs improvements. We know that surrounding businesses are often affected by water outages that can last several days. We also notice sinkholes causing traffic delays around the mall along with ongoing utility repairs and disruptions. Many of these issues raise concerns among Hickson residents about the area's future. I served on the Application Review Committee and know that CBL is willing to support, to provide the support needed to upgrade all this infrastructure to current standards. This partnership will help with these upgrades, benefit local businesses, and create a foundation for future development at this site. Many Hickson residents want Northgate to stay at the heart of the community with a bright future, and this project provides a clear path to that success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our Economic Development Committee hearing today where we were able to hear about the Northgate Tiff and economic impact plan, as well as the proposal to implement, include sales tax in that project. We also took time to hear about the resolutions involving helping families after the SNAPs and federal government, SNAP food. No pun intended. It's been a long day. Appreciate everybody's support with that. Looking forward to seeing what comes next in our Tiff conversations. Councilman Davis, thank you for being, your due diligence with hosting those opportunities to talk to your community. I look forward to being with you tomorrow, as well as your town hall. And other than that, Madam Chair, I think that's it.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Dotley.
No report.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Noel.
I don't have a report, but I do want to say thank you to the Abindale staff that they did have a HBCU college fair on Wednesday, and it was absolutely amazing. There was, I think, 12 or 13 colleges was there, and 12 or 13 high school with all seniors was, I mean, they filled out applications. They did a lot, so I was very, very grateful for that. So if you didn't come, you missed out. You missed the treat. So thankful for that. And also, we had the annual Feed the Seniors Thanksgiving dinner, which was on Saturday, and it was amazing. A great turnout. So shout out to the great District Eight. Y'all keep doing what you do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have now reached the point in our meeting where we are happy to recognize persons who are here who wish to address the council. If you are here and would like to talk to the council, please line up behind the podium and listen while our attorney reads the rules.
Yes, ma'am. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council. And here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone up front, provided for that purpose. Can't have more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and not on matters which are not under the authority of the council or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Don't engage in any vulgar or obscene language nor use to afford to personally attack or personally denigrate others, and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited by Tennessee law. And someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with a meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead and state your name, sir.
My name is Jacob Kenny. I live in District Nine, Menlo Park. I'm here to talk about the aggressive stray dogs that are roaming my neighborhood. I moved here in July, and there are several of them. I've been leaving emails, phone calls, and texts with McCamey since September repeatedly, at least once a week, and have not been contacted by anyone, nor have I been able to get into contact with anyone that was able to meaningfully resolve this. I believe that myself and neighbors deserve to have streets that are safe. This includes safe from attacks from aggressive dogs. I've had to use my pepper spray to defend myself and my dog several times in the past few months. And why are we paying McCamey for animal control services that they don't offer? If they are unwilling to pick up an aggressive stray that represents a risk to life and property, what are they there for? If you think this is an isolated incident or I slipped through the cracks, I invite you to Google McCamey Strays Chattanooga Reddit. Here's the top three results. McCamey is awful if you have strays, one year ago. McCamey is useless and we need help, one month ago. McCamey is worthless, need advice, two years ago. This is a pattern. I adopted my dog for McCamey. They say they're about compassion and animal welfare. If that were true, they would keep myself and my animals safe by removing these aggressive animals. McCamey's incompetence is dangerous and borders on negligence. Seemingly, it's going to take an attack resulting in the death of an animal, or worse yet, a child, before they act. When they don't show up for aggressive dogs chasing people in the street, it's not a question of if, but when that will occur. And I implore this council to act before that occurs. It was mentioned earlier, food, water, shelter, or rights in our city. How about being able to safely walk down the street in your own neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Elliott.
Sir, can you stay afterward so we can talk? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anthony Shaw, District Eight. I guess you get two conversations about being able to walk safely in our city. I'm here to talk about the construction that started on UTC Campus across the street from CSAS. That construction started over the fall break, and it installed fencing and barricades that are blocking access to the crosswalk to get to CSAS and to get from CSAS for students that walk. So what I'm here to ask for is your help, guidance, advice on how to approach remediating that and restoring that safe access to the crosswalk. I have issued a request to the city traffic department for assistance. They have offered a solution that involves sending kids down Busy Third Street towards Earlanger, outside of the marked school zone to a crosswalk with no crossing guard, and then to cross the street there and then to come back towards UTC and double back. So I find that to be an unacceptable solution, and I'm looking for help on how I can request or push for something more satisfactory. And I think there's a couple options available. Collins Street, obviously, is the road that's directly across from the crosswalk. It's a very short distance that I think if they could create a pedestrian ride away on that street would be more appropriate for the kids using that area. That I've seen in front of the Tivoli, that they blocked off a whole lane on Broad Street and created a pedestrian ride away. I think that could be done on Third. And if you wanted to go to a more extreme route, I think you could put a traffic light in on Palmetto and Third Street with crosswalk there for kids to cross. So I think there are other options that could be pursued. So I'm looking for advice on how we could approach that.
Okay, Anthony, thanks for being here. If you will stay after the meeting, and right behind you is a woman named Mandy Green, who is the chief operating officer for Chattanooga. I think it'd be good for the two of you to talk. Also, I'll let everybody know that a traffic light costs approximately a half a million dollars, so we're going to be looking for some other options.
I agree with you.
All right, thank you very much.
Collins is a very simple, easy option.
Yeah, I think so.
Second thing that I wanted to ask for help with.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's perfectly fine. Maybe I'll get 10 more seconds.
Maybe so.
Second item, as many of you know, my wife and daughter came here a year and a half ago specifically for a very similar issue. That cross, there were actions taken, which we obviously appreciate. What's been done recently completely reverses all of those actions that were taken and has made it worse. So I'm seeking your help from a process and culture perspective. Obviously, there is a problem in the city department that approved this construction fencing and barricades that is not considering pedestrian impact. So they did no assessment. They didn't have any conversation with the community. They implemented this process, and now we're trying to solve it after the fact. And I think that's an unacceptable approach. And this should have been a proactive solution before that was approved to put up the barriers and fencing that were installed. I've still made it under three minutes. Thank you.
You're going to your life.
Sir, yes. Sir, yes. I think I actually had the conversation with your wife in reference to.
I'm sure a year and a half ago, yes.
Yeah, I was the one to put that effect. So allow me an opportunity to see what we can do in reference.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nathan Griffin, 5500 Hidden Oaks Lane. Good evening, council members. I'm with the organization Save Enterprise South Nature Park. I wanted to first share two brief but exciting updates with you today. First, our organization has taken its next major step, and we've officially become a 501(c)(nonprofit). This exciting new chapter will bring us greater resources and visibility to educate, advocate, and also serve the community. Our second, our petition to protect Enterprise South Nature Park surpassed 10,000 signatures just a couple days ago, and we're actually really quickly approaching 11,000 signatures. just a couple days ago, and we're actually really quickly approaching 11,000 signatures. This level of engagement makes one thing clear: Resident taxpayers care deeply about the future of our park. Tonight, I do want to focus on one key point, that protecting Enterprise South Nature Park is smart economics. We've heard claims that industrializing a portion of Enterprise South Nature Park is necessary for job growth, but modern advanced manufacturing relies heavily on automation and robotics. Let's look at an example. There's a synthetic graphite facility being built inside the industrial park, Enterprise Industrial Park. It is expected to create two to three jobs per acre. Now, let's compare that to the park Enterprise South Nature Park itself. Back in 2018, over seven years ago, previous county Mayor Jim Koppinger said Enterprise South Nature Park saw over 150,000 visitors a year. That was before our population boom, that was before Chattanooga became the nation's first national park city. Hundreds of people visit every day, spending money at restaurants, hotels, local retailers, and outdoor shops across Hamilton County. Mountain biking alone contributes nearly $7 million a year to our local economy, with riders spending an average of $342 per trip. And the forest lands surrounding these trails provides nearly $3 million annually in air and water quality benefits, savings the county would lose the moment the trees are replaced with pavement. Most importantly, outdoor recreation is stable, even during economic downturns. Parks don't lay people off, but manufacturers do. In fact, this just last month in October, the U.S. saw more than 153,000 manufacturing-related job cuts alone. A strong economy needs stability, and Enterprise South Nature Park helps deliver that. It attracts professionals, supports small businesses, strengthens our tax base, and gives Chattanooga competitive advantage that industrial development simply cannot match. Enterprise South Nature Park is not just a natural asset, it is part of a larger economic driver for Hamilton County. As more conversations continue to happen, I just urge the city and council to remain committed to protect every acre of deed restricted land and preserve this park for the long-term economic health of our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Anna Golladay, District 8. I'm here once again to chat with you about the cold weather and our unhoused and poor population. As many of you know, the Department of Housing and Urban Development has changed its policy around how regional coalitions can spend their funding. Currently, our regional area regarding housing spends 84% of its $4.9 million budget on permanent housing programs for those that can't afford it otherwise. They will now, as of early 2026, only be able to spend 30% of that budget. So just to spell out the numbers again, our regional agencies spend $4.2 million on permanent housing solutions, and as of early 2026, they will only be able to spend around $1.5 million. As I shared with you two weeks ago, emergency shelter capacity here in the city only meets 22% of the need. As we lose an additional $2.7 million in usable permanent housing solutions, we need temporary and transitional housing more than ever. We have some movement happening on housing solutions in partnership with our faith institutions, and the city's recent announcement of a partnership with Enterprise Community Partners is exciting. But this process will take years to produce housing, and it will not guarantee that churches provide the specific kind of housing that we lack. We have locations in this city right now that could quickly be turned into transitional and temporary housing locations. The city has plans for how this can happen. If we think that the need for temporary housing is neglected now, just think of the number of adults and children on the streets after this reduction by HUD. We are only serving 22% of the need now, and that percentage is about to plummet. Councilwoman Dotley named it earlier in this very meeting. Food, shelter, clothing, and water are a basic right. We rightly shifted $200,000 to the Community Food Bank, and every one of you voted affirmatively and unanimously to do that. Our next ask must fill the shelter portion of the basic right. Which one of you is going to go to bat in your district to help make that happen for the least of these?
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the council? Counsel, I see no one else who would like to address the council. We have a motion on the floor to adjourn with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Aye.